Folks, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everyone to the May thirteenth meeting in the Town of Canada, they're going to plan a board. I see some new faces, so let me go through and introduce the folks up front. My far, far right is Kim Burkhardt, who is our facilities access coordinator. And then our alternate board member, Dan Barkowski, Tim Schneider, board member, Mark Tolbert, board member, Amanda Van Laken, board member, Bob O'Coursey, board member, Chuck Coiler, that's me. I'm the chairman and we have Kim Kristen Smith, who is our zoning officer. I stepped and slipped out was Eric Cooper from MRB. And last but far from the least, Chris Nadler, our town and board attorney. So we're going to follow the agenda as published. Shouldn't take too long to get through this this evening, hopefully. Of course, when I say that, that's when we get in trouble. But we would ask when an item comes up on the agenda that you would like to address the board about, you come to the podium, give us your name and address. Give us your comments and to the board. And we will either absorb them as comments or if it's a question, try to answer your question if need be. The deliberations will hopefully occur this evening where we're in a position to act on an application. So if you have an application this evening, hopefully you'll walk away here tonight with some sort of adjudication. Okay, first item on the agenda, if you will notice, is privilege of the floor. And if anyone here or in virtual land would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. So I call for privilege of the floor, anyone like to speak? Okay, if not, we will move on to attesting the legal notices being published. There were no legal notices required for the this evening's meeting, if I'm correct? Yes, there were none. So we had no advertisements we had to do in the Daily Messenger, therefore there were none. So moving right into the agenda, item number one is CPN 2025 oh thirteen. Cody Johnson is a continuation of a special use permit. Seeking a special use permit to increase the maximum overnight capacity for a short term rental to twelve. And I see we have the gang here, all right.
Yes, I have, these were printed up today. I wasn't able to send them, but that's just kind of outlining the engineering plan on the lecture fest.
Okay, this is a plan?
Well, yeah, something we have started.
Okay.
So our address fifty three hundred Blackpoint Drive. My name's Cody, this is Zach, Alexa. We're seeking approval for a short term rental occupancy twelve or greater. As of last time, we hit a snag with the size of the septic section. So we've been working with Mark's Engineering, trying to develop plans to make it suitable for what we're trying to do. They came up with the septic on the far left of the property. But in order to do that, they're talking, we may have to do some adjustments to our well. So they have a few more things they have to do to finalize this to, you know, to be complete. But I guess we're asking for a possible conditional use while we get this last thing buttoned up.
It's up to the board, it's not typically our policy to issue conditional approvals. When it's you're just at this stage in the septic system, because certainly the septic system is a very important part of this whole operation. And
Chuck, this is, Chuck, this is Brandon Marks, I can speak to the septic system if you'd like.
Uh, okay, Brian, why don't you speak?
Yeah, we're still preliminary design. We're still in preliminary design of the septic, we have nothing finalized or nothing submitted yet, so.
Okay, so it sounds like it's a work in progress. And it sounds like folks that, you know, we continue this until you do get some sort of approval for the system. Along with a review, which is typically done for short term rentals, or special use permits or about a review by our code enforcement department to make sure that the facility is adequate in terms of fire and safety regulations. And we also look, I guess, get into more detail as far as adequate parking for the twelve occupants you intend to. And that, I don't know if we seen that, where you intend to put the spaces for the occupants. Has that been provided on the site plan?
Yeah, I think the septic was the last thing on the list to cross up. We have all the fire, the safety, all that stuff. This was the last thing, because we, we had our septic inspected and it was a clean bill of health. We just found out it was a little undersized, so that's why we ran into this snag.
That's quite a bit undersized.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's keep, keep moving on this thing and when we'll continue for now.
Can we operate at a lower capacity? In the meantime, in the meantime, like going up since we passed everything else, can we operate?
I assume you can get a regular short term rental permit. You come to the planning board for anything twelve or over. So that's why you're here.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, if you want to do something less than that, that's between you and our, our development department and the code enforcement department, whether you can adequately handle to meet the standards of whatever occupancy you intend to.
So it would just be twelve or under then?
No, you'd have to talk about that with the code enforcement, sort of the development department.
Sam?
You can talk to Sam or myself.
Okay.
But I mean, since the capacity of your home would allow a greater occupancy, you would still not need planning. It goes by square footage of that. So even if you want a smaller occupancy, since your house allows a greater occupancy, you'd have to go to the bin.
Okay, well, I mean, because we can lower it on there, so no more than a certain amount of heat to be come and.
The bedrooms are still the same size, so your house can still have.
But if we only allow a certain amount of people to come.
But your house would allow more, even if you want less, the size of your house would allow more. So that's what's requiring special.
So we basically have no choice, like less, no matter what.
Right, just because of the size of your home and the size of the bedrooms, you have to get a special use permit.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
You want me to take those back? You don't really need them.
No, you can have, sure.
Yeah, I didn't want to have loose papers hanging around.
You can take this one and then we'll stay on the other one then.
Okay.
All right, so I need a motion. How, Brennan, how long do you think things will take to get sign off from the DOH or whoever the party is?
Watershed, probably going to be a month.
A month, okay. Why don't we do a continuation to our June? June, just immediately, we're June tenth. June tenth, folks, hopefully you'll have your permit by then. Okay, have motion?
Motion to extend.
The playbook requires materials to submit one week prior, so those will be on the ten, get it to the ten, get the materials submitted by June.
All right, Chuck and Kristen and Eric, just a side note, those plans that he's provided today, they're still preliminary, they're not meant to be any kind of submission, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, they, they look very preliminary. Okay, let's move on to a extension request. We decided to just move the extension requests up toward the front for the persons getting them out of the way. Oh, we didn't? Okay, further discussion, if not, all in favor? All right, opposed. Thank you, Martin. All right, let's move on to twenty twenty five oh forty two. It is a request for ninety day extension, the first extension from T-Mobile Northeast for their co-location cell tower. And this is the one out on Dual Road. Their reasoning for the extension, they're revising their site plans. Okay, wonder how much they're revising them? Oh, no, okay. If, if it's a substantial revision, certainly comes back, but I don't know what the revision involves.
They have to go outside the fence perimeter of what's already there.
Yeah. Does staff recall what, as part of their request, what the reason for the request other than revising their plans?
Mr. Chairman, I may speak to that, I'm sorry, I'm over in the virtual side of it.
All right, you're tuned in.
Yes, sir, so the reason we're not revising the site plan, anything substantial. We required, there was a requirement for the actual lines for signature. So we were already granted conditional approval, but we needed to provide the finalized site plan with the lines for, I believe it was the town water superintendent, like there were a couple of folks that needed to actually sign off on the approval on the physical document. So we needed to add those lines for them to sign to the document, nothing else has changed.
Okay.
And that's what kind of put us over at the very end there.
Okay, and I understand, I guess, from the town planner that you actually submitted the proposals, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll give you the extension, even though it looks like you've met the conditions. But since you requested, we can consider it. And since it is your first request, that shouldn't be an issue, I think, board, right? Okay, if someone wants to give me a motion to grant a ninety day extension to August eleventh?
I'll make the motion for CPN twenty twenty five, that's year four two for a ninety day extension to August eleven.
Second?
Second.
Okay, for discussion, all in favor? Okay, extension granted. All righty. Turning the page, we move on to CPN twenty twenty five zero thirty, an amended site plan for a property at four oh five Lake Shore Drive. Submitted by N T M LLC, Al Fuller. Is request to amend and approval of a site plan that was granted back in March, or it was, anyway. Is Mr. Fuller here or there? Someone representing the applicant? Okay, uh, let me move on from that, maybe we can get back to it, someone might show up later. I think the request was fairly simple. But we don't want to act without some sort of representation from the applicant. All right, the next application is CPN twenty twenty five oh three seven from Greg Westbrook for a property on Linda Drive. It's an amended site plan. Mr. Westbrook wants to move his proposed home from a location where it was originally approved. But we received notice that Mr. and Mrs. Westbrook would like to have discussions continued. And so we will continue this and the request was six months. So how about we do it for six months? Okay, so somebody can, May, June, July, August, September, be around November something. November eleventh, very good, you're putting her nine.
Yeah, you're right.
Whatever that is, yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to?
So move to the first, continue to the first meeting in November.
Motion second for discussion. Was anyone here to address the board regarding that application? You did can postpone and let you know that it's being continued. So I motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Who's, motion carries. Okay, the next application is twenty twenty five double oh six Works Engineering, representing property owner at forty five ninety four County Route Four. For a site plan, seeking approval from the planning board for construction of a single family home. Associated improvements on a vacant parcel in the R one thirty district. And there was a lot line adjustment associated with this, as well as a variance from the ZVA. If, sir, if you want to just sit there and you don't have to go. And Brennan, yep, got Brennan, so. Brennan, do you want to kick it off?
Yeah, I think you guys have looked at this application once before. It's a application for a new residence on a vacant lot. There was a house there in the past, it was torn down. This is just going to be a new residence, pretty straightforward, we got the variances that we needed to for the frontage. And we've provided a septic systems plans for a septic in the front yard. Meets standards for the New York State Department of Health. Connection to the water at the street, we've addressed Jim Fletcher's comments with that. And the reason, the reason we sought the variance, the reason that we went through that whole process actually was to save a couple of trees on the west side of the property, large cottonwoods. And we're going to use the existing driveway and there's a large sanitary easement down the west side of the property. I'm sorry, east, my east must have backwards, east side of the property.
Okay. Yeah, we had this, if you recall, board, it was a non-conforming use and we were asked to comment to the ZVA. And we did not have any objections with the extension of the non-conform use. And now we're at the site plan stage and open for any discussion? Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds, do you want to say anything or? Sounds like, sounds like it's going pretty smooth, so don't muddy up the waters, eh? Okay.
Is it, let me ask you, is this your family compound now?
Yes, that's what I wanted to.
We have, we have another outstanding property.
Cool.
Okay, this application was reviewed by the ECB back on March sixth. They had a concern about the trees, which Brennan had mentioned. They had questioned where the roof drains were draining. And there, Brennan, are they on splash block blocks or are they go to a, some sort of collection system?
On splash blocks.
And they certainly drain to the rear, right, if I remember?
I am, I apologize, I'm going to take a step back there. They are connected to roof leaders that drain to the rear of the house, it drains to a swell on the eastern side. This will daylight degrade, there's a swell that runs down the eastern side of the property from north to south.
Okay. The county planning board had questioned whether the access easement for the shared driveway existed. I think you're showing on the plans that that's an existing easement, is that correct, Brennan?
That's a good question, I believe it is.
Yeah, I, I think you show on the plan, the, as an existing condition that the, the access.
It'll show on the plan before this.
It's both a access and utility easement, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, there's a, a mention about a covert boundary line on the plan. That's a new, a new phase, a phrase for me.
I've never heard of such a thing.
Oh, it's your plan, so that's why I asked.
I, I don't know what that is.
I, I didn't see a pipe in the area. What, why didn't you just take the reference off so it doesn't confuse? Okay.
It's, I'm sorry, that's just current boundary line. That's the current boundary line that they're, they're locate relocating with the, with the lot line adjustment. You see the proposed boundary line there? Current boundary line, instead of the whole of your life, it's a boundary line.
You're looking at the existing conditions.
I don't know, it was one of the two plans.
If you go to the existing conditions one, yeah.
Current? Okay, that's what we get for trying to look at it on a, I.
Yeah, it looks, I mean, it does say current and it looks an awful lot like Dora Colfer.
All right, old eyes. There are no natural resource inventory features on this property. I did notice when I drove by, there were a couple of four inch plastic pipes draining into that street gutter in the front. Do you know where they come from?
Yes, one of them is current drain around the property.
Uh huh.
Because of the.
It can underdrains, it's wet.
Helped get all the water away from the house that was there before.
Okay.
And when we put the septic in for the other house, they put that in at the same time and dried up the property very nicely. And the other one was one that I put in for one of those spots in the front yard. It's just, it's really little pipe. It just drains to the front edge, it's a four inch PVC pipe.
Well, as long as you know where they are and when you dig your foundation for a house. The county Public Works Department had no comment, though I guess you're not doing anything in the frontage along County Route Four, so there's no reason to get them excited. Jim Fletcher had mentioned that you'll need two order meters.
Yeah, he had, we had a meeting with him and we've got that straightened out, yes.
And no comments from the CEO or the city fire department. So what's this, of course, third party reviews were pretty good shape. In that a February first revised plan, okay. Anyone in the audience want to address the board regarding this application on County Route Four? If not, I think we're ready to move forward, board, if you have any further questions? If not, we have a type two seeker and a single state site plan and this is a fairly simple application, I think we can handle it together.
I will bundle in some way, you're right, okay, I'll bundle the type two and the single state site plan for CPN twenty five zero zero six, it's forty five ninety four. Eric, we have eight conditions, but I don't think I heard any changes or ads or anything, so eight as standing.
The only thing I would ask that the variances, the variance received from the ZPA show on the plans? So that'd be condition number nine. Okay, so we got a motion for both the seeker and the site plan approval with nine conditions. For discussion, if not, all in favor?
Wait, I'll second her, I'll second.
I got a motion in a second, thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right, everyone, Tim takes the next one.
Thank you. All right, number six, CPN twenty twenty five. Good luck, good luck, Reynolds, thank you for your patience. Twenty twenty five oh seventeen, submitted by Gerber Homes for a property at Thomas Road. And this required a ZVA approval, which was continued at their May meeting, so it's continued to the excuse me, at the April meeting, now it's continued to the May twentieth meeting. So we'll have to continue our discussion on this application until the first meeting in June. So I think you have a continuation resolution in front of you. Someone?
I'll move to accept the continuation of CPN twenty twenty five oh seventeen on Thomas Road. To June tenth.
June tenth. Motion, and we got a second on this one? And for discussion, not all in favor? Okay, nice have it. All righty. Next we could get a familiar application, twenty twenty five oh fifteen Marathon Engineering, representing Mr. Cook for the Uptown Landing Project down on Parkside Drive and all roads adjacent to it. And tonight we begin discussion of section one of the development. And we have a familiar face. How you doing, Matt?
I'm good, how's everybody?
All right, so bring us up to date with, I've seen a lot of emails.
You have, yes.
I know, I know they're not all related to section one, but they're somewhat.
Yes, for an update, so we have submitted on cloud permit, both the revised preliminary overall plans, site and subdivision plans with response, written response to the planning board's preliminary conditions. I think the first seventeen, if I remember correctly, were items that needed to be done prior to signature on the plans with the remaining ones being related to final section one or being done prior to final section one being completed. The last outstanding item, which we thought we had resolved prior to the preliminary overall approval, but that we're still working through is with Farmington Water and some questions about a redundant water supply for section one. That's a new discussion topic that we're working through with Farmington and the State Health Department. So that piece or condition is the only one that I'm aware of that remains to be addressed at this time for the preliminary overall plan set before you today and to start discussion on final section one. Obviously, we have had a table or accepted application essentially since back near the end of February. But that was as a placeholder to start the referrals and PRC, as we discussed at the last meeting, until we got to the point where we're at today to start those discussions. And I'm not sure if it's wrapped into this portion or as a separate discussion item also tonight, which I think is potentially actionable, would be the grading permit application that we have made to the town in order to facilitate the establishment of the SWIP, starting erosion control and starting earthwork in advance of the full final section one signatures and agency approvals, because that is an operation that's going to take quite some time on a project of this size. So we've got some recommendation letters, I believe, from MRB relative to their review of the grading permit. And we have attempted to incorporate everything that was discussed at the last meeting as it related to addressing environmental conservation board comments related to species of trees. Incorporated service berry, red bud, gotten rid of the ground cover material that they indicated they didn't want to see or wasn't on the approved list. That's been revised, we've added the single family mailbox detail to the plans. We've added the monument sign intended graphic to the plans as well for consideration. So I think we, at least the items that have been discussed to date that the board's looking for from a final section one standpoint is included on the plan set that we updated and uploaded last week on the sixth. So that's the update of where we're at today. I know that the Farmington water needs to be resolved and signatures applied to the preliminary overall prior to us obtaining final section one approval, we're working diligently on trying to make sure I's are dotted, T's are crossed, to everyone's satisfaction with that. So I do anticipate that we'll have that done prior to the twenty seventh, which is, I think, the earliest. I think the earliest that uh. The earliest that this board could consider us for final section one. Uh, but again, what we're looking for hopefully tonight is approval of the grading permit and discussion on. Any items that the board uh, remains to have on final section one, so that we can continue to address those as we go along. So that's my update.
Okay, thank you.
And I talked about the advanced site preparation that's actually under consideration today, if you wanna go over final page one.
Let's go over the final phase first and then we can wrap it up with a discussion on the grading. So let's talk about uh, section one, uh, which is getting into the, the real. Nitty gritty of uh, what we approve with the preliminary. Obviously, section one has to conform with the, what was approved with preliminary. And as you said, Matt, I guess. Uh, depending on how your discussions settle out with the Farmington Water. There may be some revisions to these plans based on. Something moving in terms of water, or you think this thing's pretty well set as far as the. The alignment and location of.
Yeah, this is set as far as alignment, locations.
There's nothing that's still pending with Farmington that could throw this off.
There's discussion about if a second connection is required.
Yeah.
Uh, that connection location to us would not appear to make a lot of sense to put through undeveloped. Future sections because we still need to do earthwork and construct the rest of the project. Uh, one of the alternatives that was presented or potentially requested would be a bond or a surety. For the value of that connection, which may alleviate it, of course, that would be no installation, just a financial security at that point. Um, so that's part of the discussion, but nothing that would affect the design or layout as contemplated on the plan submitted.
Man, I just heard about this issue today, can you? At this point, I don't know if everybody else has any. Where's the proposed, where's Farmington want the connect? Sure, goes through phase two, I know if their plan. To look at, so uh, part of. Part of, uh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
We can zoom out for. The whole thing. Yep. So section one, uh, here, a- as you see in your package, it's outlined in the red. Uh, which is sixty five single family homes, the mixed use apartment building and uh, the apartments along Fire Hall. Uh, we're right at the limits and thresholds of requiring a secondary um, vehicular. Ingress, ingress point from a fire code standpoint, with Mike in his office on. On making sure that we stay compliant with that, so phase two is contemplated to be portion of the single family. Uh, here, the townhouses, potentially the apartments depending on the man and Lisa. And the secondary connection out of Parkside Drive with dedicated road connection all the way through the project. So the section two water main will follow that road installation out to Parkside Drive, which is where the second connection point. Right now, there's a dead end water main roughly at the driveway. Uh, just east of Ram, I think we've, that it is. Um, and we would be extending that slightly with our dimensions, providing that secondary tile. So you're saying you're. Is this the original phasing? Is it, other stuff is in red, I didn't look at it in closer, it's my problem.
Uh, this phasing is consistent with the preliminary overall phasing map, it adds the. Uh, construct contractor staging area and surplus top soils for purposes of the grading permit. Which is what we see in red, uh, comprised portions of section two.
And then if you have, well, either way, you have to add a little bit of base, we're gonna be into base two to get that right. Uh, yeah, what's, what's shown in green and blue is two A, two B, cause we're just not. I'm not even sure which buildings the demand will be for, but three and four are the single family at the project.
So we contemplate getting approval for all of section two when we're ready for section two. Comprising all of that, and then based on demand of single family versus apartments, et cetera, will dictate which neighborhoods get built off of this. Fine road first in that section.
Get your buffer?
Yes.
Yeah, everything's.
Yes, we did add a mention on the. I will note that, I think we talked about it several meetings ago, that stormwater management facility for all the way up at the corner. Did require clearing right to it, but it's not in the backyards.
Right.
If we had to move that twenty feet, um, if there was still a desire or a concern for that area specifically, I don't think that was one of the areas that we were.
No, it wasn't, that was always, that line has always been like.
Yeah, okay.
The amenities, as we discussed, are part of phase, or section one.
And uh, I, I neglected to mention this, as part of our grading permit application. All of the amenities are included in the letter credit estimate, estimate for letter of credit that we've submitted. So we'll be posting that as part of our initial grading permit letter of credit and proposing to do that. Sidewalk, trail work and other work uh, for the amenities as part of this upfront effort while we're working through everything else.
That was my next question, if the many surety was in the.
Yes, yep.
I guess, looking at the, the apartments and the, and the uh. The non-single family uh, lots, you know, five oh. Five oh one, five oh two, five oh three, six hundred. Uh, it's a little tough to see the detail of that, cause there we're getting into specifics of number of parking spaces. Handicap spaces, which boy, you know. You might have them on there, but it's awfully tough to see them, I was just thinking if possibly there could be a separate plan for each one of those lots. Showing a little more detail. Uh, what each lot entails in terms of landscaping, uh. Pedestrian access, uh, things that you would typically see in a site plan for an apartment complex.
Okay.
Okay.
And what specifically, I guess, are you looking, cause everything is in here, so I.
Well, uh, okay.
I guess what's not easily.
One of the larger scale essential.
Yeah, essentially, a little, yeah. I'm, I'm just trying to handle it more like a typical site plan approval would be for a lot that. involves the apartment complex, like we had over on Parkside. Uh, if you remember, uh, board, uh. Across the street from your project, they. You did that one, well, then you've done it, you know what I'm talking about it.
Yeah, I, so I think we have all the detail here, I guess if there's a desire to see certain things. That's easy, if it's just get it at a thirty scale instead of fifty scale or.
I don't think Chuck wants to see the whole thing at a thirty scale, I think he wants to see lot six hundred. Site plan on one sheet, on five oh one on one. Somebody's also referring to, you look at the resolution right now, even electronically, even using. Much of it's blurred.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the handicap spaces um, for five oh three right now. Because I know what they are, I can tell what they are, but zooming in, you can't. The resolution even here.
It's a seventy gig file, I hope the resolutions. Uh, okay, I understand, uh, the individual is gonna be a little bit difficult, I think. I understand what the ask is, and I say difficult because pedestrian routing is interconnected. Uh, handicap parking relates to different buildings in different spots, bike racks, same thing, so they're not designed to be a standalone. Building on lot five hundred, the parking overlaps, um, community center is accessible to all of them, so, but I can definitely. I think I understand what you're looking for, and we can, we can provide some additional detail.
Cause we've talked a lot, a lot of detail regarding on those lots, the dumpster enclosures, and I, I guess they're here.
If we want to cheat C.
Mark had brought up a point, have you considered having EV stations, and you said, well, we might think about it, well. I'm, now, now, you know, the rubber's gotta hit the road, and now's the time, we gotta put that stuff on the plan. And if, if it's gonna be considered, or if it's something that we want, or feel we need, then. Now's the time to do it, the other thing, the community center, other than community center, I have no idea. What that's going to entail or look like or involve. So, other than hearing there's gonna be a community center, I don't know what services will be provided in the center and. How, how big it is, I guess there's a pool.
Yes.
Adjacent to it. Again, I think that it's coming down to time for details. And we agreed in the preliminary view that these are a lot of items that we could bring up as part of the final. And we're here.
Yep, yeah, absolutely, so uh, if we could go to C one point one, I'd love to just point out a few of those things, cause I think the detail is there, and then if. Additional information is needed, uh, I'll take notes and make sure that we, make sure that we provide that, so.
If we could zoom into the apartments, which is the upper left hand corner here. It's, that's right, so. We've got the um, community building, uh, here, flip pool. Uh, ADA accessibility and sidewalk connections throughout both to uh, the right of way as well as along. Uh, the parking west of the Boulevard, uh, and then interconnected to uh, doors at each of the apartments from. Uh, the sidewalk parking area, uh, with the intention that uh. Essentially, you can park anywhere within this area if you don't have a garage space and get uh, via shorter crosswalk distance. Lengths across uh, the driveway versus walking down along side lane and through. Um, as mentioned, we have four apartment buildings, we're showing uh, dumpster enclosures. Um, here and here, and then those would be masonry, uh, matching the sides of the buildings.
You see the detail in that.
Okay, great, uh, bike racks are shown uh, adjacent to the entry points at the main uh, portions of the buildings, off the parking area. At each of the apartment buildings. So we do have uh, bike racks called out with numbers corresponding to total parking counts. Uh, on the project stats, on the overall, includes all the parking numbers, but we, you know, detail, but each of these rows has a. Uh, as you need, the resolution and stuff, but there's a number in each of these totaling, uh, each row of parking, uh, for those totals. As a reminder to the board, the apartment building as well as the mixed use have. Uh, garages, the apartments are single overhead doors for folks that wanna pay an extra for the apartments. And then the fire lane and circulation are along the frontage of those and then uh, surface parking throughout. Uh, if we wanna scroll down to the mixed use building, the commercial space, uh, is oriented towards the intersection of the airline, Uptown Boulevard and Fire Hall. And then there's entry points and exit points to the garage, which is under the larger L-shaped portion on the first floor of that building, it's not. Depressed or something, now that's surface with apartments above, then facade is built out with the. Uh, transparency and facade materials that the board has seen. All the way across, and then we've got a larger parking field also to support uh, the mixed use, obviously, as well as visitors. And uh, kinds that, that don't wanna favor the garage space. Um, you'll know on the plan set that we've shown uh, kind of the trail connection easement area. In totality, we did show some fencing and landscaping along that area on the landscaping plan as well. Just kinda show how that's going to be delineated through. And I'm not sure what detail I might not have touched on, but uh, if there were other questions, we showed lighting, I added lighting through the. Uh, sidewalk between the buildings that was a little bit dark, uh, previously with pedestrian level poles. Uh, that'll be complimentary to the uh, street lighting mess throughout the project along Uptown Boulevard.
Those whole locations are shown?
Yep, on the lighting plan, uh, that should be C five point one. I'm sorry, eight point one.
C eight?
Yep, that's correct.
That's fine, I, I, I do recall seeing it there, yeah, I thought you were referring to it beyond this one.
Yeah, we do have the detail of the double head pole on the detail sheets as well, yep.
And, yeah, now is also the time that we, I guess we double check to make sure it complies with our form based code in terms of. Landscaping, uh, and certainly have a separate landscape plan, which is certainly extensive.
Yes, we're planning a lot, um, yeah, so the, those pedestrian lights that I mentioned are along this, this corner. And we do show building on lighting, uh, on the. On there as well, and lots of those are on the detail sheet.
Well, maybe what we're talking about here is just. A separate. Plan of each lot, the five oh one, five oh two, something along that line, essentially cutting out or uh. Purbing out the uh, each lot. At a larger scale.
Okay, can you do that? And are you looking for that of. Site utility grading landscaping all separate, or just the landscaping? Uh, that turns into an awful lot of uh.
No, I think that's C one one.
The like, the layout.
Was the detail, and again, a little more detail on the uh, community center.
Okay.
That for sure. What else, board, did you want to see in more detail than? What we've seen before? All my questions were answered, alright. Okay, that's just me with my old eyes.
No, it is hard.
Bob asked for the big ones, Chuck.
You, you know what it is, it's because there's so much.
Yeah.
On that plan, that, I mean, single family homes, you know, that's pretty cookie cutter. But when you get down to the uh, detail of the apartments and the multi-use, especially the multi-use. Uh, it's a little more than just looking at on a large scale, or small scales.
Remember we talked even about the parking rate for ratios too, was. Long time ago, that was well within our disdain.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you had the parking analysis, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I guess.
Chuck, I just noticed that my complete streets are getting wider as I zoom in.
Okay. Now up to forty eight feet. The Boulevard. Alrighty, um, so as far as review of section one, uh, again, you're waiting for, to hear from next door and uh. Hopefully, we'll hear something between now and the next meeting and. We can uh, take action on section one, and now I guess we can move to the issue of the request for the grading permit.
If, if I could just ask one follow up question on the blow up detail, is that just a desire for graphics, or is it the board's request that that become part of the? Plan set, because I can provide presentation material of those without it being part of the plan set. I just wasn't sure how you guys wanted it.
I think. And I'll defer to um. Staff on this, but from a staff perspective, I think. Um, they need the detail and the notes per parcel. Right, to determine whether there's enough parking for X building. May- maybe it's somewhere, I'll be on it, I haven't looked closely at your final page one.
It's, it's not because there's gonna be an REA and shared across all of the.
Absolutely, I understand that, but I think. I think they're still gonna need it, I guess I don't know how, how you're gonna evaluate, but I think. I would talk to staff about that as well, aside from the planning board, but they need it per parcel.
Yeah, and we, we can provide whatever breakdowns needed to assist staff, I guess I'm just curious from the planning board's perspective if they prefer. I, I, my thought would be, it's not gonna assist the contractor necessarily, so from a plan set perspective. I don't need to have it in there, but if you wanna sign it as part of the plan set, we can absolutely include it.
I, I think we do, cause I think we wanna ensure that the older requirements of form based code. And they're on the plans and gives you the staff the ability to check the plans, gives us the ability to make sure it's there too. And to question if something's missing.
Okay.
Are you good, Matt, so we're gonna move on?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, alright, uh. Chris, you were gonna give us a preamble on the.
Yep. After the board has approved a subdivision. Plan, plan, at this point a plan. Town code authorizes the planning board upon formal request of the applicant to authorize advanced site preparation. Uh and the applicant has submitted a formal request for that, you know, letter to Chuck. Um along with a grading permit application, which whether they had fully defined plans or not. They would need a grading permit from the development office. Um so as you can see, they've got um posed. Uh grading plan with limits of disturbance that include phase one. Top uh topsoil stockpile and secure contractor staging area. Um if you're okay with that, those limits of disturbance. You should say that you're approving and Eric has a. A proposed resolution, you conclude that resolution, I would just recommend that you add into that resolution. Um an additional condition that says. With limits of disturbance as shown. On, you know, whatever the. Plan is.
Whatever state.
Red phase.
Same as one point one, I think.
Limits of disturbance for advanced site preparation and grading shall be as shown on C one point one.
One one point two, sorry.
C one one.
Yep.
Let's revise.
Uh that was five six when we uploaded those.
And then if you give the applicant. Uh advanced site preparation commission, they'll proceed with their grading permit application and give you letters of credit. And uh. If you notice that's required slip. Uh in place with MRB and. Those are also called out of the resolutions conditions.
And you can certify Eric that uh MRB is. Looked over the estimate, uh looked over the plan. What, Murph, you're good?
Same.
You're good, um.
He's good with you and authorizing advanced site preparations.
Okay.
He still needs other stuff for uh for him initial grading permit. Eric still needs. Mike needs, so. Uh. Yeah, we're still working here, I would swivel through, I know we've committed this, uh we're working through that, but actually that'll be. Required prior to any current being issued, uh pre-construction being there in the uh. Condition of approval. Uh do you want? Like, I know you have stuff that you need to see on this, do you want the conditions for your?
I think with Chris's condition that money was authorized. The advanced like within the.
And it's sudden that one of the conditions is that they obtain a grading permit from.
Okay. And you've got your pre-pre-construction meeting condition in here. Yeah, that's.
Do you attend that, Mike? Pre-construction.
Okay, uh and as Matt said, they. Uh as far as the surety went up and beyond the uh. The cost of the uh ENS controls and the grading include the amenities, which I see in the estimate. So they were, they will be included and part of the are approved. Do you want to uh mention that as a where as?
No.
Okay.
Uh those are separate. It's. MRB and me and everybody approving the letters of credit is a condition of the advanced site preparation.
Okay.
Uh even though MRB has already done it. To you've already approved the LLC estimate. Oh, yeah, but just keep it as a condition. Also, I've changed grade and permanent approvals as.
It goes the actual permit.
Yeah.
So we're just giving you the on-site.
Yep.
Which enables.
Which allows.
Yeah, we got to. Hopefully acquired three for, okay. Uh any further discussion on that, is it? Clear, sir?
Yeah, so.
All good?
It's clear, I just want to say one thing. I'm almost scared, but uh not really, but last time we kind of did this. The contractor went went too far. So I'm really. Yeah. Making sure you stay within the boundaries and not to, you know.
If he goes outside the limits, I'm gonna send him for section two, so you can.
Well, that's the thing, Matt's not there.
I know.
It's the guy with the bulldozer. Somebody from your office goes out every so often.
We do the stakeout, we're doing the swift inspection, so uh we'll do everything in our power to do so.
Well, important is that we're comfortable that everything is on the plans that we state, state means to say. Cause that's what really happened before, we had an agreement, we didn't get it on the plans far enough and they cleared it.
We did put a dimension on the plans this time.
No, that's fine.
No, this time we do, but yes, and obviously if Mike sees something out there that uh is not right, uh he's got all our. Contacts and photo logs and all about it.
Okay. So we have a uh first resolution in front of us. Uh someone want to give me a motion? On it?
I'll make a move, motion to approve this grading permit approval. On CPN twenty five, that was zero one five. Uh at Parkside Drive. With the, how many conditions now?
Five.
Five.
One added, the limits of service shall be shown on sheet C point one.
Again, I guess the record should show it's the advanced site preparation. Uh Karine, just make sure that's what it's. Titled, okay, so we have a motion, do I have? Mr. Schneider, wait a second, another discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Dig in.
You got bulldozers lined up right now?
Literally, dig in.
Let me make the call.
Thanks, everybody. See you in two weeks again.
Yes.
Alrighty, uh. CPN twenty twenty five oh thirty five. Application from Barclay Damon LLP, uh represented by Ari. Goldberg is here uh for property on New Michigan Road. Uh tonight, we're here to talk about a secret. Uh action as well as, uh I guess a initial presentation of what they intend to do in terms of uh. So it's sort of in a sketch plan or initial initial presentation phase of this uh application. Uh and further deliberations obviously occur in the future, so um. Why don't we talk about the what you intend to do on the Michigan Road and. You're doing yourself to divorce.
Sure, absolutely. Uh good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Ari Goldberg from the law firm of Barclay Damon. I'm the attorney for the solar project. Haley Effler from Dimension is with me tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to her right away. She's gonna take you through exactly what we're doing, and then maybe we'll talk more about our ask tonight, which is your preliminary intent to declare yourselves lead agency. And circulate the secret on this project.
Thank you, Ari.
Good evening.
Hello, planning board members. It's very nice to present this project to you, really looking forward to having your input on this throughout an iterative cycle. On the site plan review process. Okay, if I could have next slide, please. I'm gonna give you a brief overview on Dimension, then we'll get into generally what the project looks like and go over some details related to it. Dimension Energy was founded in twenty eighteen. We are an owner and operator of our solar projects. This is a key differentiator for other developers playing in the same space as us as Community Solar. You will see a lot of other developers also playing in the Community Solar space. What sets us sets us apart is that we do own and operate our projects from start to finish. So you and I always joke in my meetings that you're stuck with me. Um so when we entitle our projects, we are also the entities ultimately. In charge of constructing them and then operating them through their useful life and then also taking the projects through their decommissioning phase. That sets us apart, that makes us unique. Many other developers in this space are getting these things entitled at many other different boards, same as this. They get their approvals and then they will sell them to the highest bidder. You then get an unknown entity with Dimension, we're a known entity the entire time. Um so we strive to maximize our positive impacts on our projects in local communities. You know, I'll highlight a few aspects of this project in specific, um when we get to that. But in Canadega, obviously farming is about most importance here, so you'll see that there is a huge emphasis on ensuring. Continuity and agricultural operations of this project. Um otherwise, we are a nationwide solar developer, really heavy presence in the Northeast. We have at least ten projects under construction in New York right now, um quite a few operational as well. For intros to project team, I'm Haley, you haven't guessed, this is Ari, as Karine introduced. When we get to that portion of our presentation, I will turn the mic over to Caleb Scott from United Agrivoltaics. He has our agrivoltaics consultant. And last but not least, I also have Caitlin Chaburka here from CNS. She is our consulting engineer representing CNS. Next slide, please. Okay. Brief stats here, the project will occupy about twenty five acres. This is inclusive of the landscape screening detail, the fenced in acreage is about twenty point three acres. On approximately forty seven acre parcel. The project size here is four point nine five megawatts AC. Community solar in New York State is limited to five megawatts AC, so this is pretty much at its maximum capacity. It can't get bigger. Um you know, some of the benefits associated with community solar, supposed to, you know, generate generally utility scale solar. This can allow discounted electric rates to local subscribers to the project. It usually averages ten percent per bill. Um so residents can sign up, local businesses can sign up. Um it's a really nice feature as a part of the New York Sun program under NYSERDA. Next slide, please. This is our site plan as it currently stands, so I will highlight aspects of, is there a interrupt here? Okay, thank you, Ari, I appreciate it. Um so we will first note the point of interconnection off of New Michigan Road. There are five poles associated with that along the access road configuration. Surrounding the project is an extensive landscape screening array. On this side in particular, as Ari was first pointing to the site on New Michigan Road, that is actually going to be an apple orchard. That apple orchard serves a dual purpose that will serve as fodder.
What?
We do it too.
I love it.
This this for the recording.
Um so the apple orchard serves not only for limited visual landscape screening, it also serves the dual purpose of. Um fodder for our animals on site as a part of our agrivoltaics plan, which I'll get to in a little bit. You will see that the product orientation, you can't tell from here, but it's a single access tracker, so the panels, if you were to flip this, are oriented. North to south, um it's a little, yeah, anyway, um otherwise we have.
This is north.
Yes, thank you, um. We flipped it the other way, be clear to demonstrate, we will do that for other ones. We have two equipment pads on site, one of those equipment pads has a well on it for animals associated with our agrivoltaics plan. I will briefly get into that now, cause I keep mentioning it and you probably are wondering what I'm talking about. I'll let Caleb more specifically flesh that out. When I met with Sarah and in August about this project, understanding we would need a use variance. She made it very clear to me that agriculture is incredibly important to the Canadega community. That this project, you know, with a variance needed to really incorporate agriculture. We had to get creative here and we did. I wanted to make sure that we were honoring what was really important to the community. So that we could ideally come to a compromise. We have our solar project, but this is a solar project that honors the roots that are so important to this community. So a part of this project, we will be fossil, we will have animals on site, there will be cooney cooney pigs, there will be broiler chickens and lambs. And um sheep on site, pretty much year round. They will live on site, ultimately raised for slaughter, and that will be essentially a farming operation within the solar array area. To the north of the site where there is the gas line, noting here, we cannot extend our solar project across that gas line. Obviously, the electricity and gas don't play nicely. We will extend the haying operation to that side and that haying operation will also serve as animal fodder in the wintering months for the animals on site. Um so those are some of the key physical aspects of that. With that, I do want to turn the mic quickly to Caitlin to briefly discuss some of the um environmental and civil analyses that have already gone into our schedule.
I'm Caitlin Chaburka, I'm with.
Right up, right up to the mic so that I can hear you online.
I'm with CNF engineers, um we are the design, site design engineers for this. Um and in that, we have developed the site permitting drawings as well as developed a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And landscaping plan for this project. We've also um conducted a series of environmental studies, including. Um cultural and historic resource resource surveys, a wetland delineation study, uh a full environmental assessment form. Um so I want to make sure I get all the. A noise assessment and a visual impact assessment. And so if you have any specific questions on any of those things, I'm happy to address them. Thank you, Caitlin.
Okay, with that, I think we can go to the next slide. Um really quickly, we can go over this slide, Ari, would you like me to turn it to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, so first of the requirements, that's what brings us here today to you all. Um as Haley mentioned, this is a use variance, so it's your traditional review under your zoning code and the. Specific solar provisions within it, but there is no special use permit before you. The question of use is being determined through a use variance application that is pending with the zoning board of appeals. What we're not taking away from the planning board is what we think you are primed to do, which is serve as lead agency. Conduct a coordinated review of a type one secret action. And then eventually after those thirty plus days of uh solicitation, issue your lead agency, or excuse me, issue your determination. Also, pending before you is the site plan review. Some of the elements that Caitlin mentioned, those are part of our omnibus initial smittle, those are all on cloud permit, and I think the noise analysis was. Uploaded separately a couple days ago. Let's see. I want to take a minute maybe to talk about the the use variance element of it here. So we're here before you to meet uh for the lead agency determination. We anticipate that we'll be back here sometime, maybe uh late June or July. For uh secret determination, if everything goes well there, not to be too presumptuous about it. But this time next week, we are making our initial appearance before the zoning board of appeals. And what we've requested from them is a use variance, but if any of you have been to a zoning board meeting. Really with use variances generally, or taken the time to read town law two six seven B. If you have, you have trouble sleeping maybe. Um traditionally, use variances are granted based on a four element test that's set forth in that town law. However, New York courts meanwhile have recognized that certain uses are so essential to the public. That they qualify as public utilities and they receive a different standard for use variances. It's a more relaxed standard. This uh judge made law started with. Energy companies, there were nuclear facilities that were granted. Different status for zoning purposes, it's been extended to telecommunications facilities. It's been extended to wind facilities and then most recently it's been extended to solar arrays, much like the one proposed. And what it says is instead of using that town law two six seven B test. That the public utility, including private companies, applies for a use variance under this public utility use variance standard, which is just two elements. The first is you have to demonstrate that what you're providing is an essential service, electricity is an essential service. We're all on our laptops here, this room is lit, the internet's running, we all need electricity. And then the second element is that there are compelling reasons, economic or otherwise, that make the variance more feasible. And choosing an alternative location. And that's a little bit difficult, more difficult to prove, but we have a pretty robust application submission to that effect. What it does is it's an affidavit of Haley who helps uh Dimension with their site selection process. And it demonstrates that. Dimension went, looked at all of its required standards for how you pick. A site for solar, right? And it's with each one, it's selected properties and then properties that didn't meet those standards were removed from the site selection. So we started with a broad range of properties and eventually got our way down to this narrow property, to the specific property that's before you. For secret determination and site plan approval. The, one of the first elements for consideration in that site selection process is properties that are adjacent to three phase power. That infrastructure needed for the solar arrays to interconnect. So if you're looking through exhibit thirteen of our. So if you're looking through exhibit thirteen of our initial submission, you can see there's an imagery of all these properties highlighted and then a blue line running through those properties. That's the three-phase power. After all those properties were identified, I think it was in the triple digits. We narrowed down that list to properties that had enough size to accommodate a solar array. That further eliminated a handful of properties. More properties were then eliminated in a next phase of review for topography that was too difficult to develop on, uh, too many trees that required clearing. Uh, wetlands was another eliminating factor. See it right there. Yep. And then from there, when we eliminated more properties, we also had to look, of course, at the town zoning. So in the, under the zoning code, um, we got down to forty-nine parcels, forty-seven that worked were in the agricultural rural residential zone where we are. There were only two parcels zoned industrial where the solar array is permitted. So when we looked at those two parcels, uh, they were both just south of the airport. One was irregularly shaped with a creek running through it, adjoining parcel owned by the town. That made it difficult of a shape to develop. The other one, um, was relatively rectangular, but we have looked back at some of the records and it was already before, uh, the PRC and perhaps it came all the way up to this board at one point for a self-storage site. So we had, and we had eliminated those two. Those parcels were also adjacent to other improvements that the town has made. Um, and we just thought it was an inappropriate site. Another key consideration in all this, and one that we haven't yet talked about is you need to find a willing landowner. This is a lease transaction. Dimension has entered into a lease with a landowner and it can be difficult to find a willing landowner who wants to host this and in some instances, change the way they have used their land. We did find a willing landowner in Joan Taylor, uh, who is the owner of this property on New Michigan Road. Identifying her property as a candidate, Dimension reached out to her and she responded positively. Once that willing landowner emerges, uh, Dimension put it to a lease and then that brought us pretty much up to this point. So the whole point of that exhibit, oh, it's exhibit sixteen, excuse me, the whole point of that site selection affidavit is to demonstrate that one of the central compelling reasons of our use variance is that Dimension has done its diligence in identifying this particular property. And there are other properties that maybe we don't need a use variance, but it's not feasible to go to those, specifically those two specific properties in, uh, that are zoned industrial. That's a determination for the planning board to make. Um, it replaces the special use permit that is traditionally before this board. So, yes, that's a decision for the zoning board to make. Thank you. It replaces the special use permit that is traditionally for this board. In any event, we do understand that you have solar code that you must abide by. We are committing still to all the requirements of special use permit provisions. You know, there's still a decommissioning plan submitted, operational maintenance plan. Really, the only thing that's changing for this board is if you do see fit to approve it in a few meetings' time, you're just not approving especially use permit.
So I think my suspicion, can't speak for the zoning board, my suspicion is that they will condition any use variance on uh, the applicant. And I think we talked about this. We did have a painting, especially use permit, and you applied for instructions from the page.
We did submit the materials in cases needed. It's our, whatever. We're, if you, since, you know, the two lawyers are speaking real quick. We're applying for whether reservation rights has to its necessity, but between us right here, it's, it's the same process as any other solar. Uh, once it comes back to you, it will be the same process.
Except with this experience.
Yeah.
Yeah, but once it comes back to the, yeah, then we're going through like a regular shooting. As any other solar. Um, except that this one's in an agricultural zone. So I think that's, right, Sarah rightly said, uh, you know, I don't think you necessarily need uh, every, every old ball parrot, well, takes in industrial zone. I think Sarah rightly told them that, that was an important consideration.
And I'm, I'm sorry if I'm getting ahead of your slides here, but I'll add to that. You know, we submitted at the end of March and since then, we've already appeared before PRC twice. Um, we were at the ag committee last Thursday. We were there for, talking to them for over an hour, just about our agrivoltaics plan. Uh, Caleb was going to speak again, we'll give you more detail on that. But it was a really strong conversation with them and probably important feedback to bring to this board was you know, a lot of the members of the, of the ag committee were, of course, hesitant to solar. There's a lot of concern over loss of farmland, but there's also a concern over growing population. You saw the presentation from, uh, Jeffrey Cook's company about increased housing. That housing also needs energy. And of all the solar options out there, uh, the ag committee was feeling, they haven't made their formal determination yet, but they were feeling that this is a good balance of these two competing needs. To maintain agriculture as it relates to the identity of the town, but then to also maintain a positive growth pattern. So what you're going to see when Caleb gets up is exactly that balance. We hope that it serves as a model to the town. So if another developer who might not be an owner-operator comes before you, uh, you have something to point to as a model that says this is how Dimension did it. Their project worked well. We'd like you to consider this agrivoltaics plan. And then one last note on, uh, sequencing of approvals here. So if the board does see fit to preliminary declare itself lead agency for tonight, we'll catalog those responses, uh, from all the involved and interested agencies, uh, and then eventually be back here for the determination. We're going to go to the zoning board, as I said, next week, just for a preliminary presentation, much like the one I just gave. But we're going to leave that public hearing open and we won't have a decision from them until your secret determination is.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Your presentation is this mission that you should have told the town board. Is that just meant to be the town? Is there something that you're seeing from the town board?
Sorry, I was just.
All right. Bring it forward.
Yeah.
We'll remove it in advance of our presentation on the front. Hey, right, I see your.
Hey, red sharpie.
Does, does the PUV replace a conventional use variance from the ZBA?
Yes.
Are you getting the PUV from the ZBA?
It's a use variance, but the standard on which you grant that use variance is just different.
It's the same thing as a use variance.
So, but our, our board members are looking at it from a different uh, perspective in terms of justification or.
Yeah, for standards.
Same, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I gave you the, the bird's eye view of that PUV standard. I think we're going to get a little more granular, granular with them, probably once or twice, because it is it's a unique wave of change, uh, in the, in the law and it needs to be explained and understood by all parties involved.
Okay. So it's going to be exciting.
Maybe go to the next slide.
I think it is exciting.
All right. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Caleb to talk about our agrivoltaic implementation plan, which was included with our omnibus submission.
I hope you got a copyright for it, but you they paid you well for it.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for, um, taking your time this evening to review this, uh, this, this plan. Um, so my name is Caleb Scott. I'm a seventh-generation New York farmer. Um, and I, I own and operate United Agrivoltaics, which is a farm partner group, kind of like a co-op of solar farmers. So, so we, we, we have sixty sites all over New York and we are actively farming these solar sites in different ways. Each site is, um, set up a little bit differently. But agriculture as defined, uh, is the cultivation of soil, raising and harvesting agricultural or agricultural commodities. And this includes the raising, uh, and sharing and feeding and caring for grazing, training and management of livestock poultry, fur bearing and uh, animals and wildlife for, for gain or for sale or for profit. And what I want to share with you guys is not only a way that, so, so when we were approached by Dimension, uh, to look at this project, um, you know, our, our goal is to try and maximize calories per square meter, to take this land and make it more productive than how it is currently. So if it's in hay or corn or soy, I want to be able to say, let's three X or ten X the amount of money and the, the revenue that we can generate off that land while also, uh, having the, the solar there. It, it for me as a farmer, uh, I don't necessarily see the beauty, um, you know, in, in some things that other people see. I mean, obviously this doesn't scenic things are beautiful, but I, we have machinery yards and, you know, silage pits and silos with shiny domes and like, you know, like, a lot of people might not think that that's beautiful. For me, what I think is beautiful is maximizing the value of, of the land that we care for, uh, and, and to maintain. So we can go to the next slide here. What I want to share with you guys is how we use this for, uh, foods, ecosystem sustainability. The big one for me is obviously farm revenue, um, community engagement and also the economic feasibility of this. And why this is not just smarter farming, more lucrative farming, but it, it's actually locking in this land for farming for the life of the project. So you got thirty years where you don't have to worry about somebody coming up and saying, I'm going to put a housing complex on this agricultural land. Or, um, we're going to take it out of farm production for a Dollar General or something. Um, it's actually going to be farmed and farmed very productively for the way, project. Next. Slide. So what's interesting right, right now in the United States is, um, in the, this is fifty percent on average, but in the, in, in New York, eighty percent of the lamb that we consume has a ten-thousand mile footprint. It's actually imported. So when you're talking about food security, we have a huge demand in the state of New York for lamb. But we're importing, we're not importing corn, we're not importing soy. Those are great things. We need them for our farms and for our livestock. But we are importing a massive amount of, uh, of lamb. And, and, uh, most of that's coming from New Zealand and Australia. So when we think about food security as a country, like, how can we also pair that? You, you know, we always, we want to think of like, we want to reduce our dependency on electric. You know, and, and, and foreign utilities. We've got the sun, let's use it. But, but why not also be producing more food here in New York? Um, in this particular project, we'll also be producing, uh, fruit from an orchard, uh, chicken clipping poultry and pasture pork. And these are all things that we're doing right now, as you can kind of see up in this picture, all over the state of New York. So this isn't pie in the skies or a thing. This is actually being done, um, as we speak. Every day that's, you know, where, where I just came from. Um, so, so let's go to the next slide here. So I'm talking all these great things about how we can, uh, increase the, the farmability of this land, which is really important. And my farmability, I mean, like driving big revenues, right, for, for, uh, per, you know, per acre increases. But there's also another thing that comes along with that. Once you start these, uh, rotative pasture measures, you start building healthy ecosystems. So this is farming on prime land and, or, or if it is farming on prime land, we're making that land more prime. By sequestrating more carbon back into the soil, we're using these regenerative agricultural models. Um, that's also bringing in more native species, ground nesting birds, um, and, and of course, um, you know, we see a, a big increase in wildlife. One of the initiatives that I work on with my kids personally is we release Bob White Quail on the solar sites. They have protection from the raptors and then they, you know, and they, and they, you know, have protection from coyotes and foxes. So it's like kind of a little micro ecosystem where they're not getting mowed down by the hay, uh, the hay equipment that we would traditionally be using. On non, you know, on, 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 on the land that's not covered by panels. Um, so again, less herbicides, less pesticides, less tilling of the soil, right? So we're not eroding that and, and, and sending our good soils downstream. As a farmer, I understand the importance of really good soil. So wha- what we're doing is increasing that, 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 that topsoil. Next, uh, slide. So I, I've said it several times, but more farm revenue and I can get into that a, a little bit here, um, in, in, in a couple of slides. But thi- this is again guaranteed to keep that land in agricultural use for the life of the project. These documents being submitted are part of the, the, the project. So if, if it's not being farmed at some point, it's out of, you know, it's, it's like, it's not complying with its own, uh, sets of rules, like similar to not having a screening tree and, hey, replace this. You guys, it needs to be a part of this project. Um, that's why it helps having a third party kind of monitor and work with the local farmers to make that happen, though it's not entirely necessary. Um, so I think I've covered most of these things here, so we can kind of move to the next slide. All right. So, so also I probably covered this, a lot of this as well, as I was rambling along, so apologize I had it done there. But, um, so think about this though, when it comes to right now, uh, a lot of farmers, they, they, they're leasing out, uh, the land that they're, that they're using. What, for you, for young farmers, land access is a big deal. If, if you want to, if you, if, if you're a second son and you're not getting farm or you're, you know, or, or you're just a, someone who wants to get into farming, the ROI on buying land and actually making profit on it is is like thirty years. It's just not going to happen. It's, it's a, it's a challenging industry. My grandparents made money farming and then, and then my parents really struggled in the eighties with a small dairy. Um, and I watched my family inheritance just get taken away and we were near three-phase power and we could have back then had something like this actually save our farm and we would still be farming today on that land if this was, if this was an opportunity. What's, what's neat is I, I can, I, I don't have to go back out and buy land now. I, I have access to tax-free land that I didn't have to purchase and so does every other community, like young entrepreneurial farmer. So this is, you know, helping disenfranchised minority groups, um, and individuals from, from, uh, disenfranchised, you know, communities in general, or you're coming from a rural agricultural community, getting access to a loan to buy land is, is challenging. It's just, it's just the realities of it. But here's what's great about projects like this. Not only are they putting in the infrastructure for us, building the fencing, putting the wells in, planting apple orchards, buying chicken tractors. These are, this is all part of this plan. Not only are they doing that for, for the local farmers within our co-op as part of this project to ensure that the agricultural activities are being done, but it allows those farmers to generate a lot of revenue, comparatively speaking, in, in short order. Like, it's like, you, you don't have to go out and take those loans out and, 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 and have a lot of expenses. So this is, um, this is a really, really excellent way for, for us to be able to say, look, you guys are limited on the amount of even, I, I think on this system here, um, there, there, there might be like ten megawatts available. This particular project is taking up half of that, maybe even a little bit more of that. That's not a whole lot more projects coming on, online with that inverter. That one inverter is, is, is the bottleneck here and it's millions and millions. It's very expensive to upgrade these systems. So, so when you're looking at this and you're going, this could be an opportunity here for us to help that landowner value their land at the maximum amount possible. While also allowing that land to generate, uh, now this is a very low number. This does not actually incorporate the poultry apples, but nine hundred dollars per acre is three times the amount you're getting from corn with, with less inputs, less fertilizers, less herbicides, less pesticides. So you're, you're, the, the revenue that can be generated per acre from farming, food for our community is, is three times higher. Actually, and again, that's a really low number because I'm not factoring in the poultry and the apples into that number. We do have that in our agricultural integration plan and I, and I encourage you guys to take a look at that. I know it's like forty pages, but like, it's, it's a really solid document and we really spent a lot of time trying to make sure that this project really kept to the, the heart and soul of this community. Like, I mean, it's not just this community. I, I have solar in my community too. And I don't want to see that land just being, you know, take, the, the, that good farmland being used up. But, but what I do want to see is that land being valued. I want those farmers who want and need these projects to, you know, to, to, maybe they're aging out of farming and they want to go, I want an inheritance for my kid. Like, here's a way that we can, where we can bring that, it, where we can bring this all together. So, um, next slide, that might be. So these are, um, these, th- this is just two pictures smashed together, uh, really, but I, I thought, you know, I, I thought it was pretty artistic there. Um, I don't see it in Photoshop. That's just literally like two pictures, like stuff. Um, but again, I'm going to just say, when, when we look at these projects and you think about a solar project, you go, well, how, is that really better for sheep? And I'm going to tell you, I've been doing this for, for twelve years, twelve years. I've been making my living farming on solar projects around New York State. And I've helped hundreds of people get off from their second job as a school bus driver to do their passion and start farming, because this, this actually works, but the stocking density underneath solar is higher than open pasture. The food is better because of the shade. We have a higher rate of gain on our animals by almost ten percent. So we're looking at fatter, faster lambs, less, we've got, um, so, so we've got an extended grazing period because the frost is kept off from the ground. So now we've extended our grazing period by almost a month. We're getting better vegetation because the sheep hang out in the shade. Grass only i- i- is like super efficient and it doesn't need as much sunlight as most people think. And that's where the best grass grows in the shade, especially with the ta- panels that tilt like this, because they're constantly getting sun underneath there. So since the animals are hanging out in the shade, that's also where they're they're helping with their fertilizing around and then that's also where the best grass is. they're helping with their fertilizing around, and then that's also where the best grass is growing. Um kind of like over the septic tank. It's like green grass, open lanes. And the open lanes also, the you've got a higher nitrogen um eh eh broadleaf plants that are that are more nutritious for the sheep under and a more variety ver- varied diet. So so and again, this is, this is, this can seem like pie in the sky, but when designed properly, and this is designed properly, with the right seed mixture ratios, you know, everything kind of finds its its habitat in there. And and these are very, very, very successful projects. Um um we're not talking about just tossing some sheep in there to assist with lawn mowing. Um you know, on subpar hard scrabble ground with, you know, with with, you know, whatever fescue mix that's not that edible. Um we're talking about maximizing the density of this forage um and 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 planting really, really good stuff for our animals in here. That's gonna be, that's gonna last a long time. So um and again, infrastructure is taken care of. Um we've got the fencing, the orchard that we've got planned in there is also for a fall rotation. So as the, as the sheep come off from the um, you know, off off from grazing, they can rotate into a separate high fenced area where the orchard is. And then they can graze beneath that orchard until those trees are large enough to actually be harvesting um substantial crops from them. And again, these are planted as part of the screening. Why not? Like, why put plants that are, we're trying to value this as farming. So let's, let's like, let's take that and and actually value that land in the setbacks and buffer zones as well. So yeah, lots of shade, better vegetation, more diversity, less stress for the animals, and long-term contracts. So what's nice about this also is there is, there is also a vegetation management side of this that they, that the solar companies are, they need to keep their vegetation down. So instead of paying a landscaper, they're, they're not, they're they're gonna pay a farmer um to to do the work that otherwise a landscaper would do. And you know, for us, that's really important because there's a dollar discrepancy with with Australia and New Zealand. Almost a two to one dollar discrepancy. So that's why we import all this meat, because it's hard for us to farm it and be competitive. This gives us that competitive edge and brings that industry back to the United States, back to New York. Um and I think that's really important. And it is long-term plan. It's the life of the project. You know that's gonna be producing food and and energy um for the life of the project. Um and you know, a lot of people are like, are these projects really? You know, I I've been grazing one project that's that's over twelve years old now. Um and I asked the the O and M team, how how much, how how efficient is this? What's the like, and he's like, oh, it hasn't lost, it's like less than one percent loss in fifteen years. And I'm like, it's running like at ninety-nine or ninety-eight percent efficiencies as to when it was? He's like, yeah, but now we have panels that are way more powerful that we could put in place if we want to trade it out. I'm like, interesting, cuz for me, I'm like, I wanna be, I want my kids to be able to farm these properties as well. So um I think that's pretty much all I have for you guys, and I'm sure you'll have a lot of questions.
Very interesting. Thank you, Kell. Billy?
Tim, how long does it typically take for one of these farms to scale up?
Oh, uh, that's a great question. I work with Cornell University. Um Vince Slough, he's a, he's a mathematician because I'm a farmer, not a mathematician. And um I wanted to know, is it better to build versus buy? Um where where is your return on investment? Um and we found really, really solid evidence showing that just buying all the sheep you need year one and then selling lambs is 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 your best bet. If you, if you scale up, I mean, a project uh I I on twenty-five acres, we're talking about seventy-five sheep realistically. Um but but that's about three sheep to the acre as like a sustained forage for the season. If you, obviously, you could have more sheep than that, but you would be, you would, you're, you would be restricting your, 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 your grazing days down. Um a- and that would be like a more of a like a mob grazing scene. So we could bring in three hundred sheep, but they would pretty much eat it down in a week or two. And then we'd have to bring them back and keep doing that rotation. So that's one, that's one model. Um we we have, we have more of a holistic approach on it. So so yes, buying seventy-five sheep and then selling those lambs at one point two lambs to every sheep, um you know, your, 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 your return on investment's much, much.
Yeah, and I don't either mean something a little bit different, actually. How long does it take to get it functioning? So yeah, obviously, you've got to prepare the money.
Six, six months, uh six months to to build the project. And then depending on when that is, and depending on the cover crop and when it was seeded and all that other stuff, we may shorten up our s- our 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 initial year. We'll have a maybe a slightly lower stocking density just for vegetative reasons. Um but the more pressure you put on that, actually, the 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 um the 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 better the vegetation uh can be. So um I, we we usually stock the sites shortly after construction. If they finish in the fall, we'll fall, we'll do it in the next spring.
And the apple maturation, I'm assuming that takes several years.
For sure, yes. And that is one of the reasons why we're valuing that as a rotational cropped area. And then also they will eat the drops, um cuz we're also gonna have Akuna Kunis and Idaho pasture pigs to short study those ones that don't rip the ground up and mainly finish on grass. Um they're much smaller pig, but um but we found they work really well grazing with sheep and also with the chicken tractors. So like, you can feed the pigs and then run your chicken tractor over where the pigs had just, where you put your grain and s- they and then they scratch up and then you seed behind the chicken tractor, some Dutch white plover or something. And then as you go around the site, the and this site was designed to take two um twenty-four foot chicken tractors and run potentially four hundred, but we wanted to use conservative numbers, two hundred sheep um every ten week, or two hundred uh chickens, chickens every ten weeks.
So I grew up near a chicken farm not far from here. There's, we've got a rather large sheep farm over in the Fairport region.
Yep.
How do you deal with the handling of the waste in a project like this, so you don't deal with those neighborhood?
Yeah, so so the nice thing with this i- at the scale is you're not gonna have a lot of nitrogen loading from waste because there's there's seventy-five sheep and they're dry, they're, they're, you know, as a ruminate, they're dr- pe- dry pellets, like a rat or beer pellet. Um but the the what, eh the chicken tractor's footprint is fairly limited, and because it's constantly moving, it really diminishes the smell quite quite significantly. The amount of pigs, um we would usually are calculating. It's it's again, probably one to uh like a a a sow and piglet combo for every ten sheep. Um pigs are very, very efficient eaters. Um and their conversion ratio is much better than sheep. So we can actually, but again, we're raising these in our plan to a- as roasters, you, we're not, they're not getting more than a hundred and fifty pounds before they're out the door. So they're, we're, we're selling them at a smaller size because we don't wanna overwinter them because that adds to the cost. Yeah.
Then um obviously, there's contracts in place for the solar aspect of it. What, what are the arrangements that happen in place to maintain the style of farming that you're doing?
It's a separate vegetation management contract. Um and 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 that contract ensures that the vegetative management practices will be in, will be implemented throughout throughout the project.
That lasts the entire, the same as the solar contract, the entire thirty-eight.
Yeah, it's not necessarily with the landowner. It can be with other local farmers. Um and you know, eh like, like I said, we have a farm partner group, so we have farmers that are accounting over that might be interested in it. If someone here local isn't, we wanna always try and find, you know, if, you know, Scott's family or someone else wants to to manage this, um we would, we would defer that way first. We, we work at at that point as as kind of a third party, like uh administrator of of the project.
But if it fails, it fails. There's nothing, obviously, that prevents it.
You 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 would just bring in a new farmer. Yeah. Yeah. If 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 a farmer gets older, wants to retire or something, you just bring in a a new, young, fresh face or an older face. It doesn't matter, really. Um, yeah.
You're not slaughtering.
Um they sure can. If there, if there's a, um, we do overwinter on uh property by bale grazing. Uh again, around, we stop the chicken tractor and we run the bale grazer uh system um around the exterior. Again, there's, there's, it's designed for a larger space between the fence and the end of the solar panels so that we can do that um around the outside. We would significantly reduce our um stocking rates um probably to maybe overwinter one um one sheep to the acre. The other option is we sell off all our stock and then we buy in new feeder lambs in the, in the, in in the spring. And and so if we, if you don't want to go through the hassle of overwintering, um you you can buy a, you know, a thirty-five pound lamb and finish it at a hundred pounds um and and double your money on your lambs. And you can put, if you're stocking lambs and doing it that way, the stocking rate goes from three up to six or seven. Um and and probably back, actually back down a little bit to five with the pigs. Again, we lay all that out in our agricultural integration plan, the different options for how um how we can do it. Cuz the the one thing we don't wanna do is the farmers are the most ingenuative people out there, right? And they're, they know how to make money on this. We don't wanna like uh be overly prescriptive so that it doesn't make sense for a particular farmer, right? We wanna be say, say like, these are the options that are permitted, permissible and expected, and these are the standards that are, that are need to be met. But it it's um, you know, it you you don't wanna, eh eh weather changes, you know, eh it's a dry year, you're gonna, you're gonna reduce your stocking density. I've won people, persons say, well, why don't you specify that there has to be so many sheep breaker? And it's like, well, have you ever been through a drought? You know, uh I don't wanna be like, have to have the sheep on there when we really should be pulling them off or putting them on other pasture.
And we don't do that.
And we don't do that on our own farms. Right. Yeah.
Talk about farmers. I saw a farmer farming that land today.
Yep.
Has that farmer been talked to about how he's gonna be impacted and or anything like that?
Yep. So we've had conversations with the Brockel Banks. They're aware of the project. Um you know, they lease seventy-five acres from from Joan Taylor.
Like Brockel Bank farmed that property?
Yes.
Okay, I know Brock, I know.
Yeah. So they they farm Jones forty-five acres right there as well. So they still have um access to, I think, approximately thirty acres of Jones property um at this point.
And there, there's talks on maybe even just saying, hey, you can hay this other ground and continue to work it and sell the hay to the sheep farm so that it's not really taking as much out of production. It would really just out of the nine or seventy-five acres, it would be taking out twenty acres.
Right.
But they also have first right of refusal to do the the the, for, you know, the 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 grazing and other farming.
I did make it clear to to Scott that, you know, throughout this process, United Agricultural takes obviously contracts with local farmers to work on these, these elements of our project. So if he's at all interested to continue having an element in farming this land, whether that's with the hay or, you know, with the sharpener available, yeah, the, you know, that that's certainly something we could discuss.
So he's farming it now. You wouldn't build on his crop now. You'd let him take his crop.
Oh, yeah, of course.
We're, we're a little bit of ways.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, it's like, you might get a hold of the season.
Yeah, you might get, yeah, I mean, even after the season, you may get in a whole other season.
And he might even have the opportunity to like, plant something there for, you know, for, for the ve- you know, for the future vegetation if we can
Yeah.
work out something.
Yeah.
We, we wanna work with the local farmers uh as as much as we can in in every situation where we're, where we're implementing these projects.
Do you have a uh established local partners for your product to go back into our chain, our food chain?
So you know, it's.
A lot of work to get all this food, and then all you're saying is great for us. How is it staying, you know?
Yeah. So so I mean, certainly the farmers markets and stuff are great avenues. Again, we don't wanna be overly prescriptive, but as a farm partner group, we do have like animal acquisition uh internally. A lot of these may actually get raised up to go to another solar site somewhere else in the state until there's enough. Um but we we have um, we're able to put together larger orders of stuff to take down either to New Holland or to um uh or or um to Wolverine Packing or in Michigan. There's not a lot of packaging um facilities in New York. That is something as New Yorkers, we need to try and, but they just get shut down and like, you know, eh people aren't wanting to build a slaughter facility and a packaging facility in their backyard. So a- and there's been less of a demand for them. But um I I think, to answer your question, keeping it local mostly happens with the ethnic markets. Like n- n- ninety-five percent of my sales are sold locally. They're sold to the the Muslims that come and buy them for their holidays. Um and they, they, New York has a law that that is an on-farm slaughter law, so they can actually practice their, their own butchering on onsite. Um I mean, that wouldn't be happening here, of course, but um, but it, but I would say that the lo- that is the largest market right now.
I was gonna say, cuz there's a a local restaurant here that gets their pigs locally.
Yeah.
From here.
Eh it's, it's in the farmer's best interest to find those to be as vertically integrated as possible. Again, we don't wanna say, no, you can't sell your sheep to Wolverine Packing and stick them on a thing and just out the door they go uh and take the quick cash. But on on operations of this size, it's, again, and and the numbers we used are those numbers. If you can sell at a local farmer's market and get fourteen dollars a pound, which is what lamb goes for right now, good, go go for it. That's all to your benefit. But you you, the farmer needs to have the time and energy and a willingness to do that, cuz they might just go three dollars a large weight, out the door, and not worry about trying to, you know, trying to get that extra three to five dollars a pound out of them.
Billy, you had something else to uh bring up, or are you just? Okay, uh word word. This is a quasi sketch plan, so uh any concerns you may have or any recommendations you may have as, as the applicant moves forward and and we eventually get to a SUP and a safe plan, uh sure they would find it helpful.
I'm sorry, do you mind pulling a second?
I have quite a few, but you guys.
Well, I'm trusting that you're gonna.
I am like too paid, of course.
Harry, I I can just say that we've seen quite a few solar uh farms come through the planning board. And the same question comes up every time, and I think we're gonna maybe hold you guys to it a little more this time. How does it benefit the residents of Kent, town of Kent, what have, okay? Um we, we asked that question, and the next thing you know, it's, it's going into a substation and it's gone, and there's, there's no real benefit financially to the town.
Yeah.
And certainly, there is concern about the environmental and all the other aspects. And I think this board will be more than just looking at the requirements of this uh solar law. We'll be looking for, you know, comments and some sort of approach to that.
Yeah, understood. So let's talk about community solar in general and how that benefits the community first. So community solar is different than utility solar because the intent is to benefit the community. So under NYSERTA's New York SUN program, residents and local businesses have the opportunity to opt-in from our project by subscribing for our project. I do this with air quotes because I know those are kind of silly terms for these things.
What's the cost?
There is no cost. It's free. You get a discount on your electricity bill. That is the benefit.
What are the boundaries of the community?
It's first come, first served. There is not a boundary. So we'll first, you know, you can first send it out to all of the residents in the town.
Other than Fairport, can I get in on this?
I was gonna say, Victor, it's Army Ten.
I think like how, you know, technically, there isn't really a limit to it. It, you have to still be in the same utility territory. And you, so if you're not, so sorry, if you're not RZNE.
No, it's more, it's more an example.
Right. Totally understood. Um so you need to be in the same utility, obviously. Um but generally, it's like the same town, then it it expands out from there, right, to to a certain degree. It's usually really not hard to hit that threshold. Um you know, one megawatt is usually one or two hundred homes. So by the time you have five megawatts at max, it's like a thousand homes, bless you. So it's, it's not many homes, but this provides a local benefit to all subscribers that A, they don't have to put solar panels on their roofs. This is an opportunity for people who are looking to have green energy but don't wanna spend the cost on the infrastructure, don't wanna upgrade the cost of their roof, don't feel like taking out a loan for that. This is an opportunity for these homeowners to take part in green energy without any cost to them whatsoever.
Is there a limit to the number of participants?
There are. So once we hit that number.
Hit the five megawatts.
Yeah, but like people can unsubscribe and then new people can subscribe. It's, it's pretty fluid that way. Um you don't, like, once you subscribe, you're not like beholden.
I guess what I'm asking though is there's no way.
I guess what I'm asking though is there's no way to ensure that the residents of the town of Canada can be first on that list. There's nothing that protects their interest in them, they allowed it to happen in their town. So first priority goes to the town and Canada resident, you said it's first come, first served.
I mean, technically.
I think you can, you can set the the offtaker subscription service to only go to residents of the town first.
Yeah.
Giving those people time to be the first come.
Yeah, you could, you could, yeah.
Then you expand the search range.
You could make that a condition, you could say it first needs to be extended to residents within. And I can also speak with my my optake team, I have a whole team dedicated to this, what like what that threshold mileage is from a project that makes sense. Cause sometimes, you know, obviously town bounds are pretty long, right? Like, say you're twenty five miles, it may not make sense, right? Um but I could certainly get like a range there and, you know, present that. Um so not only do they get the opportunity to have green energy when they don't wanna put it on the roof, everyone receives discounted energy when they subscribe. The it usually ranges, but it's an average of a ten percent discount on your energy bill every month, so yes, sorry.
Whole bill or the service or the utilization?
That's a great question, I think it's the energy itself.
Utilization that I.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, cause it's been going up everywhere here, crazy.
I guess another benefit I'd add to is, so right now this parcel is taxed at all the improvements it hasn't, just simply just the hayfield. But what you're doing now is you're injecting millions of dollars in investment into the property. So it's the value of those improvements have now become taxable. There are options, of course, for us to go through the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot process. We haven't fully decided what's best for us now, I know we had talked about this at one point with with Chris uh prior to submitting. But in any event, the value of the land is going up. That provides a benefit to the town, uh and increased tax revenue. And the other thing is that increased tax revenue, it also goes to the school district and the county. There's no services added, so if we were to make, this is forty five acres, if we were to build uh. Uh twenty two and a half acre lots, you get increased tax revenue for sure, but those. Twenty lots would also now be sending their to the school district and, you know, taking more services. This is pure dollars without additional services. The other thing, there's a lot of talk about, you know, maybe this is the question, or maybe you, this is where the question comes from is. Wow, that's great, we put new power, we're hosting it, but all the power just goes to New York City. I don't really think that's necessarily how it works, it does stay within this grid, it's for the consumption within this utility area for our genie customers. Does also increase grid resiliency because there's diversified, okay.
So the home that Opsian actually gets the juice from this facility?
Not, no, the juice is fungible.
Okay.
So it it's just, it's just adding five megawatt worth of energy to the grid. And because the offtaker has said, I'm gonna use that energy.
Even though maybe.
Correct, national grid then doesn't have to, or sorry, RGE then doesn't have to kick on their peaker plan. Because of this, so that they pass those savings. Um and then obviously, I think Caleb has said incredibly eloquently the benefit to maintaining farming within the site. Uh you could, I, the other benefit that I tried to get at earlier was if another solar developer comes in and you don't like their what their answer to that question. You can tell them this project gave us some benefit because it established a model for agricultural tech integration into solar ray, can you achieve it?
I actually.
Well, you can show us that.
And I I really do, I think it's having assurances that that continues.
Yeah.
Project of some kind. It becomes, I I understand this, I would make certain here and there.
Yes, to your question earlier, um you asked about scale up and then the contract. I think one of the things I might have been missing from the answer is dimension contracts with United Agricultural Tech or some sort of similar agency. To then ensure that farming is happening on on the site. We're open to, and this board does have the authority to implement reasonable conditions to ensure that that happens. Whether it's dimension providing a redacted copy of that contract with United Agricultural Tech or similar. Um we have operations and maintenance reports that are produced uh on a regular basis. Uh some towns, I don't, I can't remember if your code requires it, but some towns do require those be submitted to the town. And then also there's just the knowledge that it's there, it can be checked on. We are subject to zoning enforcement, so as we get closer to. And as its porties fit and approval, we're open to reasonable conditions that ensure that that happens. We wanna see it happen, we wanna ensure it happens for the town and we can make certain condition, make sure that happens.
Just like Caleb said, we'll we'll make make it a guarantee for the life of the.
Yeah, I definitely wanna make sure also, obviously that can be a condition, obviously, but the intent of this is not to bait and switch you with this plan. To present this to you to get our approval and then not implement it, just wanna make that clear.
We didn't even consider that until you just said it.
Yeah.
You're doing it.
Thinking about dead birds on the plane, baiting and switching, I swear we're actually pretty nice.
It actually would be great to. If you have a list of places, other townships where projects like this have happened.
We we did provide.
Question came up at the environmental conservation, maybe the first PRC, and we did submit it.
It was actually part of your um voice study, I believe, or one of your studies. There was Seneca, there was several of them.
Seneca, Lan- Lansing?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so so Lansing uh has a similar project like this um in New York that that I I'm fortunate enough to operate. But also dimension itself has contracted in um um uh awesome, God, yeah, and also in. Um Ditz, New York and in several other places, so they're not, they're they're actually committed to this, not just because. Can and Dig was like a farming community, they're they're committed to this because they believe in it as well, from from the top down.
Where's the closest one that you are doing?
Uh I mean.
Similar to this.
It it would be Lansing, New York, um and and part of the reason, so so as. We're not often given the opportunity to farm the way we want to farm and in the way that's gonna make. The most economic sense. Oftentimes, we're we're presented with a site and we go, how can we make the best of this? Um in Lansing, fortunately, we're able to, that company has been very gracious and has just said, you know. Do what you want, the and and that's just rare, so we're doing these things unpracticed. And we're also gonna be doing other fun things uh in the in the in the coming year with, you know, chock mushrooms and other crazy stuff like that. Purely because we wanna see this happen and we we know that there's a market for this stuff, so, yeah.
How busy you, how how many and how how long?
So so I've been grazing on solar sites for a little over twelve years now and um we're on sixty sites in New York. And and a hundred and thirty total. No, but we've had once where the company has has uh switched hands and the new owners are like, I don't know. Uh about this whole thing, we already have our mowing crews taking care of things and then they revert back to a traditional vegetation management, that has happened. Um but again, it uh that that's once in twelve years, so.
And within that number, it it varies the level of. Implementation, right?
Correct.
You're grazing, is this one of the more robust ones?
This is, this is, this is one of the more robust ones for sure, and that's why there's few of them in the state, because. A lot of times, if e- especially if if the developers aren't, um you know. The the if they're not thinking about it ahead of time, then they're not putting in the things like the wells or the extra orchards or the. Or splitting the site for rotational grazing or whatever they might, when they reach out to us in advance, they can capex that out in the project and they. And then and then, you know, for them, it's all part of the, it's all part of the build price and for us, it means we step into a very successful project. Yeah.
My thought is. Being an owner operator.
Exactly, yeah.
My thought is, you know, that it fails naturally if all the. Sheep die from a disease or the grass dies and there's nothing for them to eat, it's the same as if that kind of tragedy happened to any one of our farmers now. You know, they, you know. Actually thinking of it differently, Chris, I'm thinking from the perspective of uh there's a heavy amount of scrutiny about standalone. Solar. Yep. Um I'm not suggesting that there's even the thought of a bait and switch, but it's a, I'm happy to hear twelve years. That's amazing, that's a long time, there's good data, it's really good data, it's on the data. So I love seeing that aspect of it, I'm hoping he says he's gonna fill it up with honeydewes too for pollination and other goods. So all of that fits with a lot that I like, I just I'm not familiar with it. And it is that value mechanism of now we're three years into it, let's mow it instead. So that's.
Yeah, but they have to come back for a special use permit revision, cause their O and M plan. But the special use permit would be based on the grazing protocol.
And code would be coming out going, where are the sheep?
Yeah, and you're varied, you're varied from your special use per- conditions and therefore you have to come back to the planning board. And I guess you could run the risk of a shutdown.
Well, and it seems to me, and I didn't know twelve years, I guess I've seen that, but maybe exists always offered. Did you start doing this as an amen, as something for solar developers to provide as an amenity, or did you see this as an opportunity? Hey, there's a bunch of rats, I could shoot you.
I saw this as an opportunity, um because we were always farming, but we were farming on forty acres instead of. What we were used to farming.
Yeah.
And um and I I was working in the in the having a landscape company. And we were grading the roads and I'm like, this is crazy, and then they asked us to mow the site and I'm like. Five guys in there with weed whackers all day, I'm like, my sheep would do such a better job with this. And so I worked with Cornell University, which they have a very robust agricultural school and um. You know, to do a pilot program on one of their projects just to ensure sheep wouldn't. Eat the wires and be all raucousy, and I knew they wouldn't, but um but but we needed white papers. Putting this together, um after that, uh from like two thousand thirteen to two thousand and eighteen, I was mostly working with Cornell. On their different projects and they have six of them. But what happened was that developer saw how well we were maintaining them and started giving us more and more project. And then people were coming up to me going, how do I do this? And I'm like, oh, well, you don't have the contractor's insurance, you don't have this, you don't, so we started a co- co-op style to help the farmers get access to this. So that they understood the master service agreements, so that they work, so they they could um, so that they could actually execute and implement this. Most projects have very little agricultural integration initially. Um and as time goes on, we build that in by like overseeding and trying to make sites better and, you know. But oftentimes, it's a, it's the service is going in and and taking care of the vegetation. Um as opposed to mechanical mowers, and we like to value our service at around the same price as mechanical mowers. In that regard, because we feel like we're doing a superior job and but historically speaking, farmers just. Don't value their time a- as much as they should, um whereas like a landscaper would, right? So we, it's a little bit of a mindset change, where it's like, you're actually gonna get paid to feed your animals, but the quality of the ground isn't as. Good as you would hope because it was built on harsh gravel or wetland or because a lot of the early solar sites weren't built on. Good agriculture land, they were built on the really poor land, and so as we build these, now years later. That soil base is built up, our stocking densities are increasing, our work and and we're we're making them more and more farmable as time goes on. Um, yeah. Long winded it.
Thought you uh maybe getting back to the actual array and.
Yep.
That side of.
Um, I'm trying to do. The guy for solo.
People's extension.
Yeah. I have several pages of of your site plan that really gave a really good review, I hope. Uh and I appreciate that you changed the plan and went for the fifty foot buffer. Uh I noticed that right off the bat, that's great.
Can I ask you a question about that before you keep, so was it? We were wondering if it was the buffer around the property boundary or the array?
It's around the, you did it right.
Okay.
Uh it's just all the way around, which you did. Uh you exceeded the fence, rating at seven feet, now it's eight feet, which is great. Uh so those are a couple of things I noticed right away. Uh I I I have a big question on why the access road is right next to this guy's house. Sure. Um and has that person been notified and talked to and he understands what's coming?
Yep, I so I all explained your question in parts, so first. If we look at the access road configuration, I'm just gonna point it up here. There is only one pole here left to connect to, this is as far as we could put our access road here because there are no other poles down New Michigan Road for us to connect to. There just simply isn't a point for for our project to connect, so that is where our access road and therefore our our pole alignment is changing at this point.
And you have something from him says that residents that it's, they understand that.
We've talked, we've, I've had a meeting with those residents, I've discussed their concerns, their initial concerns for stormwater management to make sure that the project would not. It's, you know, put stormwater onto their site.
Yeah, they're low, they're low right there.
Yep, definitely understand, obviously, as a part of our project, we will not be spilling, you know, Caitlin, you can speak to this if you like it for for that. But otherwise, their other concern were socioeconomic related about the project. Do these solar projects have impacts on, you know, the rate of, you know, of selling the house? We included a report to that effect. Community solar projects of this size have have nearly no impact on property value investments. I would imagine that the utility scale ones that are a thousand acres or two thousand acres that envelop a whole town might. Um but but these small projects do do not have bearing on property values, so we made sure that we include the course. Strum, sorry.
So I reviewed that and it I I I was hoping to find one out in the middle of nowhere with no houses around it, but the ones you gave all had houses around it, so. Uh I did read that, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um so that answers that first question, uh C one oh sevens. Uh C four plant list shows a minimum of only four inches, why?
Um.
Part of your buffer.
C one oh seven, sorry. Yeah, so there, obviously, for the fifty foot buffer, there are a lot of plants going into the landscape screening. There are some small little seedlings that are going in as a part of that buffer, um you know, otherwise this this landscape. Screening right now is already costing us millions of dollars at this point, so.
Four inches though is not really a buffer, it's gonna take a long time for that plant to get to that level.
I think.
That is a buffer.
For the shrubs, we can reassess the planting height, obviously a shrub isn't going to grow. Eight feet in in most cases, and we can also reassess the um planting height of the trees, just to. To ensure there's adequate screening at time of planting, there.
I'm not looking for total blockage.
Oh, yeah.
On day one, but let's start with something that's lead something.
Note here that there are plant, there are quite a few shrubs and trees in here that are proposed at taller heights, not. The entire fifty foot is certainly not at four inches, these are just the the smaller ones up front, right?
Just uh, let's just start at a little bit higher rate.
Just stick real quick on landscaping and combining with your other question. The road is screened by, I think it's, I I don't know the exact type of planning, but additional evergreens right along their back ends there.
Yeah.
To ensure that, you know, sort of their concerns about.
Yeah, I saw that in your visual plan there too.
Yep.
I think it seemed like that was added, cause I don't remember in the beginning, but uh for there was, it was, it's been added, whatever. Um. Okay, to panel heights and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Max is ten feet.
Understood.
Uh what is the max angle that it's going to go to?
I think our max range of motion is sixty degrees.
So at sixty degrees, you're showing your on your detail that it's about nineteen degrees. So at full sixty two degrees, whichever your panel array can go to, seems like it would be over ten feet.
No, um believe it or not, it actually isn't, I, even with a three foot leading edge, we did. The trigonometry on this and I think they're at a nine point six feet.
Can you show it at least at the sixty two degree angle at ten feet max?
I can, so you just want this detail updated to reflect the actual maximum height.
Height of your angle that you can go to.
Yeah, cause I think this is, this angle is sho- shown just for reference.
Yeah, but it says ten feet.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, so, yeah. I I tried to do solar at my house and I think I had to do forty three degrees, like optimum around.
Yeah.
Um.
I think we calculated that out and it's like nine point six is their max height with a three foot leading edge at a six degree range of motion. Definitely made me think of a trigonometry.
I'm I believe in the paper, I wanna see it, to show it, what it.
Absolutely.
That's what we go by, uh fence detail, I saw it was good, no problems here. Uh you kind of mentioned the soil samples out of the town code, but I I didn't really see it anyplace else, I mean, you say you're gonna do it. But uh make sure that part of your initial construction plan and also in the deconstruction. A decommissioning of it, it's not listed in your decommissioning at all.
I think we did reference it in the decommissioning.
Uh not when I looked at it, but make sure, make sure that there, at the, I believe it's two per. But make sure, make sure that that the, I believe it's two per acre. Or to whatever the code is.
Yeah, we committed to it in that one exhibit, but we can make sure that that is spread it throughout the operative documents.
Yeah. Um. Oh, that was answered already. Now, the array itself is a passive or active motor that moves it.
How do you mean?
So from my understanding is active moves on heat from the sun and uh. Or passive moves that way and active is motor.
I believe these are motor based.
Though I didn't see any decibel. Ratings on your motors.
Okay.
And it's not part of your noise study either.
Yeah.
So at at least that would have to be provided. And a new noise study uh based on whatever that noise is.
Yeah, I'll confirm that they're motors and if they are, we'll include an updated noise analysis.
Good. Now, you're from what I understand, you had seventeen inverters?
I don't have to count.
Okay, that's what I read somewhere. And they're at about sixty-nine decibels.
No, yes, I'm.
Oh, true.
Uh that was all included in your noises. But I didn't see anything above the motors.
Okay.
And they do make noise. Uh the one one on County Road ten, they said. Well, there's a racetrack right there, they're used to. It looks like, yeah, but these things move and they make noise and they make noise. And then they go back. So it's it's like. Chinese water.
Yeah, I'll take all that.
Torture.
True, true.
Um. Yeah. So in your maintenance plan, I'm jumping around a little bit, but in the maintenance plan. It talked about disposing of the system. Why was it in there and not in the de- it's in the decommission also, but it's also, why would it in your maintenance plan on page five?
I would have to look at the the exact language, I don't have it.
Because it also said that um. It would just be disposed of because there's no hazardous material in it in it. But I did some research on that panel and it actually has some hazardous in it. So. Yeah. I got the document. Where it said that it um. The JA Solar five ninety-five W panel. Um contains. Hazardous waste at the end of their life. Heavy metal, silver, lead, arsenic, titanium. Uh these materials are subject to the Resource Conservation Recovery Act.
Where's that from?
Theirs their site itself.
Yeah, most of the panel stacks on these, they're they're mostly glass, aluminum and silica, so that's.
So one word we tried to do in the decommissioning is to make sure that the solar panels get disposed of in the proper, at the proper.
Yeah.
Method at the proper time, however that's disposed of. And I know you. Have you gone through a decommissioning yet?
No, we haven't had to. Yeah, they're, you know. Generally.
Not really out here yet.
Yeah, not.
Yeah, California, you're seeing it now, and they're they're having problems with deep with that. So how to dispose of that and they're trying to sell them off.
I know the industry is also trying to prepare for that with recycling facilities that can handle these things. I don't know, I know there was one in the town of Greece that was proposed, that might have been for lithium ion batteries, but. Hopefully by the time it if it if it went decommissioned, there is that infrastructure there. I think it's pretty makes sense to add the hazardous wastes, whatever the program.
As long as there's something in here that says, yeah, we're gonna dispose of it in accordance with current. Rules and regulations, that's.
When correct. Maintenance plan it. There are heavy metals.
Yeah, well, it's it it's kind of in the decommissioning. Also, it's in two places. Where it kind of says you're just gonna be disposed of, but then later on, almost toward the end, it actually says. Will you dispose of properly? In accordance with.
It might be in the maintenance plan just to ensure that. If it happens during a traditional year of operation.
Yeah.
That whoever is.
Yeah, I give a panel in spirit place.
Either way, we'll update it with your comment and then we'll make sure, it sounds like there's three places it needs to be inserted.
Yeah. This is kind of like I had on your emergency response plan. Uh PDF page seven. I don't know if this is correct, Kirsten, but they're calling out a planning board clerk, a clerk. Is that the correct term?
Where?
On their emergency response plan. I don't think they're your your clerk. So. Just.
Yeah, it's just a carryover term.
Yeah, I'm dealing with this. They work hard, I don't think. It's somebody that's gonna be uh. Contacted for this, whatever it is.
Yeah, you can certainly update that to whichever title makes sense.
Yeah.
If there's a preference, just tell us.
On your fire response plan. Any thought to the residents that are in that area? Have, because your fire response plan mainly talks about uh. Fire department getting there, making it some making determination what's going on, blah, 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 blah.
Yep.
Uh but your paid your section in there, step two is to call nine one one. So it's not first.
Yeah, I I mean, for for adjacent neighbors, you know. Obviously, if if it's safe for them to remain at their residence, that's that's ideal, um you know.
Usually that kind of decision is dependent upon chief of command who arrives at the scene. We did contact. Uh we contacted the city of Canada with fire, you know, a chief nightmare.
Mm hmm.
He had no initial concerns. Out of abundance of caution, we also contacted uh Cheshire.
Yep.
He told us to check with the city, so.
Yeah.
Uh we'll we'll keep poking them, but it's a good call up to them to make sure if they have any thoughts about that.
Good. Um. And all those signage is gonna be up and around there. That talks about emergency. Or how to access it and all that.
Yes.
Sorry, you had a quick. No.
No, I was just, I was just gonna ask the closest fire hydrant.
Is.
Probably in the lights also at the intersection.
Ah.
Maybe at the intersection or kind of around thirty and. In New Michigan.
Okay, we can call that.
Yeah, make that part of your EMS planner. And you've listed all phone numbers, names, people to contact in an emergency uh. That standard in our.
Yeah, it needs to be on the signage too.
Sign.
On your glare data.
Sorry?
On your glare data.
Mm hmm.
Uh I read a paragraph in there where it says the panel height is seven feet.
The panel itself.
The panel height.
Sorry, so the analysis itself, you need to account for the being at chest height, so you have to account for like a five foot. So that's why you you buffered it seven. You you do five or six or seven feet for that. Because you're factoring in someone sitting in a car. As they're driving as opposed to from the ground, right?
So it's not the panel height, but it's actually so that it says panel height.
Yeah, um I understand the confusion, um but yeah, you have to factor in like the view of what you would be sitting in from like an SUV. So you have to factor in that additional height plus.
Hmm.
So. To get a realist to kind of where people may be.
I appreciate your photo simulation that you've done um. And this always gets a lot of people, but you know, it it's. Your benefit that does that, but it also show it. Um. I don't think actual. Because your panels are at ten feet. And it shows the fence at the same height.
We can take a look at that.
On, I could tell you what page it probably, page twenty.
Three foot fences. We can't see panels over.
Yeah. And like.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Could be the perspective.
I mean.
It also be perspective, yeah.
Yeah.
It's closer, so it just appears.
That's what I'm thinking.
There is a pretty significant buffer between the fence and the. Yeah, it's at least at least twenty.
In a few years, it will be. Right?
Sorry?
You there will be a good buffer in a few years.
Oh, yes, as far as treatment. The landscape, oh, no, sorry, we meant the um. But like the distance.
Oh. Um. Over that already, the decommissioning plan, actually on page two thirty-nine. It talked about the current regulations. It it just said by current regulation, didn't say what state regulations or anything, so. That would be where I would put that comment, which is exactly where you put it. In the end anyways, as per. NICEAC or whatever it is.
Okay.
You just didn't put it like. By current regulations, by who?
By the headers.
Hmm.
Okay.
So this came from the AI committee, I don't know if the AI guys talked to you about it, but they talked to me about it um. One time after another day is that. That the. I think on your decommissioning plan, it just talks about. Um reseeding and things like that.
Yeah, we did talk about a little bit.
Did they talk about harrowing it all over it again, make aerating the soil all over? That's one thing um.
No, they wanted to know exactly how we were gonna restore it, uh especially to the fill levels that it's currently at. I think Caleb did speak to it a little bit at that meeting, and there is, I want to say one of the last, actually, it's in our cycling, one of the last. Pages is about soil restoration.
Right.
What what is the emerging best practice that you're willing?
They're they're telling me that the the last thing we should do before we seed is to harrow it. Is aerate it. Uh and so it's not compacted. Uh I will. Verify what they want, I mean.
We're going back to them on June eight, no, that's Sunday.
Early June.
We're going back to them in early June.
They're all pretty much, I know three of them are all farmers.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom Stryker was, he was the one that, you know, he was, he, I think the conversation with Caleb struck him really well, this. Young farmer coming up, second generation.
Yeah, he's the one that told me about it.
Okay.
It'd be huge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Still samples we talked about. I guess now I involve Chris, because Chris can help me with this one.
Yes, sir.
The bond um at today's prices is a certain number. And then. At the life of it, it's a different number.
Yes.
Which number is provided to?
Uh well, actually, today's prices. And then it's a factor to to account for that, whatever it is, whatever M R B deemed appropriate. Or if this board wanted and it's board is technically approving those on. Uh but you're delegating it to M R B and me. You wanted to set it at two percent annually, then go ahead and do that.
I think that's what you guys.
That's what we we proposed, so we did it at the decommission cost at current dollars was four thirty, four hundred thirty thousand dollars. Two percent escalator per year resulted in a year twenty-five amount of seven hundred six thousand.
Right? Yeah.
Which is roughly Chris's hourly rate.
Yeah.
Not all of us are uh Barkley, Barkley Dayman.
So Chris, my question is, do we? The bond is seven. Oh, six, or is it starting off at a lower?
If it's a decommissioning bond, honestly, I don't remember. Um.
I don't.
I think, no, it would be for the final amount.
Okay, that's what I thought it would be.
Well, no, excuse me. It would be for the amount up to. Seven oh six, but if it. If. You know, dimension left tomorrow, or let's say five years from now, since this is not working, Dubai.
Hmm.
The town would cash the bond in and the bond company would. What they're promising isn't a check, they're promising. Decommission, so they'll hire somebody to decommission. Or whatever they get.
Yeah.
However much they can get get away with it. So bonding companies. Have staff who are specifically hired, you know, their expertise is finding. People for less than the bond amount.
None of the worst.
Oh, and in any event, it's paid for by dimensions in advance, so in the event we are five years later, they. Flat coop, you know, they're.
And if we if we if it's not active for a year.
Yep, we. Yeah, that's in your code.
Yeah. New York State. We've increased our percentage of renewables, it seems like every two years.
Yes.
We meant to go. One year twenty. I don't remember thirteen or something, now we're increasing the goal, we're like five percent now for. Uh solar. As a renewable. Uh my question really is, really, when are we gonna, when's enough?
Hundred percent by twenty fifty.
That's what I'm saying. For renewables.
Right, so uh this is relevant to the public utility use experience discussion as well. Part of why the the third department of New York, the talent division there felt comfortable. Coming down and determining that solar is a public utility is because of the CLCPA. Uh the Community Leadership Climate Protection Act that sets forth those those goals. And the third department said that that is a flaw. And it fluctuates based on the need, based on growth. So I don't, you know, we can't speak for Albany, but. It's hopefully it's a hundred percent met and, you know. Someday, but who knows, the growth might increase, that's that, then it drops to eighty percent.
Did they ever come out with exactly what their percentage on solar would be to for that renewables number? Yeah.
I'm sure it's it's as one of the generators, it's probably larger, especially with wind not being as favorable and more expensive to build.
We're only at five percent now.
Yeah.
That's solar. Into it all. Um. When you submit your decommissioning again, do it as one document separate. Right now, it's part of a big, huge package. We as a board have to approve that decommissioning plan separately.
I yelled it already.
Oh, did you?
No, it was it was separately uploaded, that's a different issue, but I think it might have been split up into.
Yes.
You you don't mean the attachments to the decommissioning.
I mean a decommissioning plan.
Yeah, now it's separated out as exhibit ten.
Cause I reviewed it.
I know.
Two days ago.
Like I just uploaded that.
That big one.
Chris's. Maybe convention too. Well, it did like twenty twenty-five, maybe it's. So you don't have to, this is the whole giant.
Yeah.
Google, you don't have to open that necessarily, I did upload them separately as exhibit. Uh and then try to give it the correct label of the dropdown.
That's a big thing right there. Title.
You could maybe control up for decom.
I will say, Haley, you did a really good plan. I mean, you've you you it's one of the better ones I've seen.
Okay.
Cause you have accomplished. What we want.
Right.
Okay, and it's just a little bit of fine tuning.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just, you know, like a new noise abatement. Then I need the this this numbers on the motors.
Sure, no problem.
Uh. The little things.
Yeah, no problem.
Might have to be on this, so I'll make sure.
Well, I was getting tired of looking at all. I looked at them.
It is a little PDF. I'm gonna do that.
So when I review, I mean, it's good, I've done this for a long time, and whenever you PDF, I do compare.
Yes.
On a PDF compare.
Okay.
See what was changed.
Okay. If you have issues finding anything, um we'll still stay within cloud perimeter, we'd be happy to. Circulate separately if you need, that helps.
Um as long as it's a separate, I mean, it's a separate thing that we approve.
We'll we'll make sure that. We'll make these updates and then we'll make sure it's uploaded separately for you.
Thing.
Okay, very good, but uh anyway, also the board have any? Comments? Suggestions to the applicants? Uh. Again, uh.
I have one more thing. I'm so sorry.
So if you were Mr.
I'm so sorry.
No, sorry, depends on next next month.
You can bring that in.
No.
Yes.
There's a couple of places where you talk about in your decommissioning on the the. Conduits that are in the ground.
Mm hmm.
There's one place where you say they'll be removed, another place said if it's below forty-eight inches, which is what NICEAC kind of says.
Yes.
We don't have to.
Correct.
Our rule is. You put it in, you take it out. Our rule is, you put it in, you take it out.
Okay.
Regardless.
Okay, we can update that.
I'm, I think I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, no. You'll get plenty more chances to also. But no, we wanted to make sure, yeah, at least this meeting you had the.
Well, you saved me rising to decom plan again, since you did that. So thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not upset.
So again, thank you and good luck with the ZVA and.
Thank you.
That community solar, you can explain that maybe a little more.
Okay.
I got you.
How that works. Uh cause it helps him explain it to our residents.
Did you ask us at the PRC or am I merging projects in my?
I was at the PRC.
Okay, I can't remember if you asked that there, maybe you repeated.
That's right. Caleb, thank you. Appreciate it. Very interesting. Very interesting concept. All right, so we have one action to take tonight. Uh regarding our team. Our tend to be lead agency for the seeker review.
Can, my question is, can we do this without having a zoning decision?
You sure can.
They can't make it so like you said, then until you declare the agency.
We think.
Yeah, we just don't act on the site plan or the S U P or the seeker until zoning decisions. We act on the seeker before they make the zoning decision, but they need to be coordinated with the public. Let me explain it real quick. So. You're not making any environmental determinations or making any determinations for any other board. All you're really doing is sending this list of entities or involved and interested agencies. Uh or having Eric or Kristen send a letter saying, hey, we we think we're the best agency to be lead agency. Let us know if you disagree. I don't think I've ever gotten a, no, we want to be lead agency. Sometimes the town boards and the planning boards get into it a little bit. Um.
And the D E C has to decide.
Yeah, there's a whole process. The commissioner of the D E C.
Commissioner of the D E C.
Um can decide, but I've never seen it happen. So. Um and generally, signing board is the most uh appropriate agency to be the lead agency. In a, in a site plant related. Uh project. So this is a necessary procedural step. And then everybody has thirty days to respond for not. If they don't respond, you can then, because you're intent to declare yourself lead agency, at some point you will declare yourself to lead agent and. Continue the seeker process. Okay. You understand?
Okay.
Two agencies, not yet.
So as, as mentioned, uh there is a resolution in front of us. Uh of our. Declaration of intent to be the lead agency uh. Is. I guess the the actual body of the thing says how thirty days, but the thirty days to respond, right?
Very well.
That's in the uh.
In the, in the letters, it's specified.
It's not in the resolutions. Okay, so you have a resolution in front of you, board? Somebody want to give me a motion? Since they're so inclined?
Oh, yeah.
Amanda said so moved, I think. I, if I heard.
I want, I want to give the.
Number.
I want to give it to Bob.
Oh.
You're. You're the, you're the guy.
Uh okay, I'll make a motion to uh. State that we're gonna be the intent to be lead agency uh for the seeker on a. Use variance, one state site plan review at zero 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 New Michigan Road for AR two zoning on a solar, on a solar.
I'll second. Motion second one. So I guess this thirty days would be.
It's not when, when we send a letter.
When you send, it'll be sometime after our first June meeting, so. And you're going to the ZVA twice, that'd be May, June. Okay, so we're probably looking at July.
July eight was everything we did this.
Is that we had on our schedule? That we start talking about the site plan and the uh. Okay.
Thank you for committing that to July eighth and.
Right.
And then the second ZVA would be after your secret termination.
Mm-hmm.
You might, yeah, then just. There's a possibility for June twenty-fifth.
Oh.
Yeah, we talked about it, but twenty eighth, but we let ourselves open depending on what comments we see. Like you put it for June twenty-fifth, subject to removal, you guys only have to show up.
Uh it's usually been our policy if it's a June ZVA be. Uh the turnover from the ZVA to our second meeting in June is kind of tight, so easily.
July is a perfect.
July.
It's just secret, so it's fine.
Well, the ZVA wouldn't make a decision in June. They would make it. If you made the decision for seeker at June, on your June twenty-fourth meeting, they wouldn't hear it for their decision to the ZVA in July.
Use variance, I guess.
Okay.
Then you wouldn't hear it till August.
This one is cycle.
To make the decision.
Yeah. No, but is it variance?
Okay, anyway, we have a motion in front of us.
I don't remember.
We'll worry about that in the future.
It's not on the type.
All in favor of our intent to be lead agency, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, clocks run.
Do you need any formal action on your statement or?
No, we just give you comments. It's. No, no commitment, no commitment on our part, no commitment on your, your part.
Well, well, they've made.
You better listen to what we said.
Yeah.
Well, well, I know you.
Thank you.
I'll see you next week.
Coming out.
See you next.
At the zoning board. Okay, can I have the approval of the minutes from the Chuck? Do we need to take action on four oh five?
Oh, yeah.
We never got anybody.
That was, they were requesting amended for condition.
Yeah, they wanted, I intend that says that they've got a straightener.
Chris, thanks to each of you. Well done. Well, I.
Next week you got actual farmers on this other board.
Yeah, they were, they were having trouble with the uh, the Jankovski under getting it to uh. Respond on the. Graining easement.
Hundred dollars.
Uh they were. Uh making progress with the NIDOT on the landscaping in the front. They liked the landscape plan show. Good night, Al. But they were just, you know, hitting the. Hitting the, in their head, the wall against the, what's the uh mobile home, modular home park. Uh and that was the relief they were looking for. Uh all right, well, let's continue it. I guess.
Is that a change? Or is it a?
Yeah, I guess there's no application. Well. Well, there's an application to amend the uh.
Doesn't appear on this agenda.
It is.
It is.
It's number second.
Oh.
Number three, CPN twenty, it it was assigned a workspace.
Say just to turn it to the next one. Continue to.
Continue to the first June meeting.
Or they have their conditions, they have to meet them, but they're, they're not gonna beat them, beat them. And I think they're in their second extension anyway, right?
Yeah.
Right now, they have the existing approval of the positions they can meet. They made a request to change that approval. So I guess the question is, what the deadline is for their approval basically? I think that buys them time. But it's not a decision. Nothing's expired tonight. They didn't.
Right.
No, no.
Right.
If nothing, just can, continue to next one and make that decision when the applicants.
Okay. Do you hear, so moved.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you for twenty-five that zero three zero. Couldn't help yourself, huh?
Thank you, Mark, for bringing that to my attention. Now we'll go back to the minutes from April twenty-second. And the initial corrections.
Everybody's favor of that continuation.
They're all.
I heard him.
He was asking.
Yeah.
Bug flow.
Where Ari was getting that.
Yeah, they were going after him. Uh, okay. That we voted on, minutes we got, right? Have a motion second?
Yep, I said second.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeesh. All right, there's no security releases uh.
I say for next meeting, I will not be here.
You will not be.
The little C some you.
She, I.
I planned my vacation around.
Okay. Beyonce waits for no one, okay, so.
Amanda will not be here.
Uh any other items we want to talk about the CD? Nothing on, yep, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at eight thirty nineteen.
Okay. Second. Take a vote.
Aye.
All right, we are off the record. Uh before you leave though.